All right, thank you colleagues. Welcome to the 15th meeting of City Council for this year. I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishnaabik, Haudenosaunee, Lenepeewak and Atawandron peoples. We honor and respect the history, languages and cultures of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area: the Two-Roe Wampum Bell Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy Silver Covenant Chain, Beaver Hunting Grounds of the Haudenosaunee Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, the London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishnaabik, and the Dish with One Spoon Covenant Wampum of the Anishnaabik and Haudenosaunee. Three indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipewas of the Temps First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Temps, and the Muncie Delaware Nation who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures and customs. The City of London is also committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489 extension 2425. And with that, I'm delighted to let you know that Alexa Brown is a local musician and a recent graduate of Western's Music Performance Program. She's a versatile artist playing everything from jazz to classical to Latin and pop styles. She loves sharing her passion for music wherever she goes, and today she's going to be performing "Oh Canada" for us. So if you could please rise and she'll come up and do that. Thank you. All right, next we'll do disclosures of pecuniary interest. I'll look for disclosures from colleagues. Counselor McAllister.
Yeah, I have a conflict. This is from the Corporate Services Committee, 8.1, item six.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other disclosures? Okay, great. Seeing none. We're going to move on to recognitions. I have a number of recognitions to do from the podium, but I have a couple of colleagues who have recognitions before that. I'm going to go to Counselor Pelosi first.
Thank you, your worship. Today I stand and recognize Truth and Reconciliation Day, also being known as Orange Shirt Day, which began in 2013. This is a day to recognize the deep injustices that were done to the Indigenous community throughout Canada and the removal of their children into residential schools. City Hall will be, for the first time, raising a survivor's flag on September 27th, and the City of London buildings will be lit orange September 30th to October 2nd. We encourage members of council and the community to take this time to learn about the injustices that were done and continue to be done throughout our systems that were set on and off, and how others are affected by them and the intergenerational trauma that it has caused.
Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. Colleagues, I rise today, and a number of us are wearing the gold ribbons because September is recognized as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And the ribbons were provided to us by ChildCAN, an organization that since 1974 has been providing support and assistance to families and patients of childhood cancer. This organization first came to my attention through a constituent of mine, Stephanie Simmons, and so I want to rise today to recognize her in particular for her courage and bravery in battling and surviving childhood cancer, and for the energy that she has taken from that battle and put to use in helping other children who are now experiencing childhood cancer and helping them work through that very, very difficult time in their lives as well as their families. So to the survivors, we recognize the very difficult battle that you have fought. To those who have been lost to childhood cancer, which is the number one cause of childhood death in our country, we take a moment to pause and reflect and remember them. And if colleagues would just rise for a moment of silence, we'll just observe a brief moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to childhood cancer. Thank you, colleagues. And, your worship, I have one other recognition that I would like to take a moment today to offer, and I would like to take this opportunity to extend our thanks as a community to Jim Graham, and John Winston, and Holly Doughty, and all of Board of Directors of Airshow London. We had a fantastic show here at London International Airport last weekend. It was fantastic, not just for the fact that the mayor and I got thrown out of planes at four kilometers above the city, to which I'm sure was a great delight to many constituents, but not so much our city manager. However, it was also a momentous tourism event for our city. The mayor and I were at Dr. Auker on Thursday for their 10th anniversary, and the delegation from the German headquarters of Dr. Auker commented how they could not get a hotel booking in London. They had to stay in Woodstock because the hotels here were full of visitors to our community for Airshow London. I also want to thank all the colleagues who were able to join us at the top of City Hall on Thursday evening for the welcome reception for our very special guests from the US Army, the Golden Knights Paratrooper Team, and for the British Red Arrows Display Team. The pin that I'm wearing today with the Canadian flag and the Union Jack was a gift from Commander Burchett, who reportedly, or who reported to me following landing back on the earth at the airport and having a beverage with her afterwards, that by 1 o'clock on Sunday, the Red Arrows had completely sold out of their merchandise at their airshow tent, and that had never happened to them at an airshow before. They were delighted with the welcome that Londoners extended to them. They had a great visit here, and they look forward to coming back. Given the work that Mr. Graham and Mr. Winston and Ms. Doughty and others have put into this airshow, I am confident that for the fourth year running, the Airshow London event will be named the best airshow in North America once again. And I want to thank all the volunteers who gave countless hours over the weekend to make it a great success. Thank you.
Thank you for those recognitions, colleagues. I'm going to move to the podium for the next set of recog- Okay, is this on? Yes, good. All right, perfect. So the next set of recognitions is annually when we recognize those City of London employees who have reached 25 years of service in the year 2024. We'll go through each of the different divisions. I'll announce the division. I'll have the city manager come up and join me at the front, and if the deputy city manager for the divisions would like to come up as well as we present the awards, we'll do that. And if there's friends and family in the audience we need to pause for a photo for, we certainly do that as well. But let me just say a couple words about the service of our employees. First off, I've had the privilege of serving on council now for almost 10 years, and I could tell you, of all the jobs I've had, the exceptionalism and professionalism of the people who work for the City of London, bar none, tops any experience I've had. The way that they execute and support council's direction and vision to serve the residents of London is top class, and that is a function of not only their dedication to this organization, but to the friends and family who help them and care for them and allow them to do what they do here. So I know that there are many supporters in the audience today. We're going to recognize some amazing city employees, but at the start I wanted to say thank you for everything you do to support these amazing individuals in all the other aspects of their lives and allow them to serve the community in the way that they do, helping grow a city that is prosperous, vibrant and welcoming for all. So with that, we're going to go through each of the various areas, and we're going to start with enterprise supports. And then what's going to happen is I'm going to say the area, the clerk's going to read out the names. Some names may just have one or two, and then we'll pause after each area, do a photo, and I'll hand out a recognition. So enterprise supports will be the first area.
Steve Spring.
The next area is environment and infrastructure.
Yaroslav Chish.
And don't write. Thank you.
Clinton Kirkpatrick.
All right, next we'll do finance supports.
Barry Galloway.
Legal services.
Melissa Beck.
Neighborhood and community-wide services.
Gary Mossberger. Mark Radbourn.
Social and health development.
Jifa Day. Johanna Medina. Lydia Monas. Brenda Northup. April Alborn.
And next, we have the London Police Service.
Mike Patruff.
All right, thanks to everybody who, on their 25 years of service, I really appreciate you coming out today. Let's give them one final round of applause for their service. And of course, you're welcome to stay for the council meeting if you like. But perhaps you have other things that you'd like to get done. We really appreciate all you do for our city. And on behalf of all Londoners, again, thank you for the service that you provide. It's exceptional, and it's phenomenal. And you do amazing work making our city a tremendous place to live. Thank you. Okay, on to the next agenda item. Review of confidential matters to be considered in public. There are none. That brings us to the council closed session. There are four items on our agenda. Look for a motion to move into closed session. Moved by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Stevenson. We will open that for voting in the system.
Press votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Okay, and we'll be moving to committee five, colleagues. So I will see you over there.
Okay, great. I'm looking for speakers. Counselor Ferreira.
Thank you again. So I'm bringing, I did circulate and a motion. It's the same motion that I brought to committee. So I'm bringing the motion again as stated in the letter. It's based on creating a deterrence framework that I believe will prove to be extra effective. It looks to be in the form that would allow us to operate quite lean and it looks within the ability under the municipality or the municipal act. And it's something that would stand up to a challenging court. But most of all, I feel it's going to be quite effective, especially with the changes that I am proposing to you. You know, so much so that landlords who misuse or take advantage-
Point of order?
Yes.
Just looking to see if there's a seconder before you would start.
Yes, just give me a second, Counselor Ferreira. I'm just checking on something too. Okay, so Counselor Ferreira, so the motion that you circulated was on the added, so that's good. You don't have to read it out. It's on the screen. Colleagues have had a chance to read it. You've expressed that you want to move it. I'm going to look for a seconder and then I'll let you proceed with your discussion on it. So Counselor Ferreira is moving it. It's on the screen. You can see it in Escribe. It's as was circulated on the added agenda as well. Look for anybody who's willing to second that. Deputy Mayor Lewis is willing to second. So there's a mover and a seconder for those pieces. I'll go back to Counselor Ferreira. If you want to have your speaking time now, you could provide your rationale for your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. So like, as I said at committee, it's going to constrict the N-13 loophole with what we can actually do as a municipality. You know, for bad faith landlords who are going to start using, or have been using the N-13 as a means to evict tenants, long-term tenants who are paying affordable rent, they're not going to be able to use that means anymore. And I did say at committee, you know, we're going to have to start focusing on the other loopholes that exist. I was trying to make that case at committee, so it's the same case that I'm trying to make now. And I did say, you know, things along the lines of we're trying to, I'm trying to add extra spikes in the loophole around the N-13, within the N-13, and big enough spikes that, you know, any bad faith landlord who is considering this option can see that and would be deterred by that. So specifically, I am big on the failure to apply for a license portion, and that would be the initial fee of $2,000 a month for the first month, and then $2,000 a month the month thereafter, and then up to three months. I believe that's more than sufficient time for all the permits to be pulled and all the work that has to be done to get that N-13. And then after the three months is when we would double the fee on that. So that would be the first level of deterrent, and most likely, that would be enough. That would weed out all of the bad faith N-13s that we'll start seeing, that we have seen. Since it applies per unit and with the schedule, I, the reason I have that schedule is because you have the income coming in per month on the rent that any bad faith landlord would be seeking to bring in money when they evict their tenants. So I feel like it would be a good idea to also apply that per month, so you can wipe out those extra profits that any, anyone would see or seeking to gain. And then it would, like I said, it would be doubling to 4,000 a month after that. I think those escalating levels of monetary penalties would be very effective, and I'm calling it progressive deterrence. I feel like that would be a good way to work, and it works within what we can do again. So that's what I'm putting on the floor, and I'm hoping for your support. Oh, sorry, there's a second amendment. I did add a second amendment to the first initial one that I added to committee, and that would be basically us to report back after 12 months of the rental unit, rental unit repair license operation, and just to look at the effectiveness on how that is able to achieve the rent evictions prevention. So there's two motions there.
Well, the good news is it's all one motion now, so, and colleagues can read that in the Escribe system. It's moved and seconded. I'll continue with the speaker's list on the proposed amendment. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. And apologies, it's not my intent to cross debate with another member of council, but I want to ensure that Counselor Ferreira's interpretation and that the staff's interpretation is that the report back in 12 months is after we have 12 months or one year of data, and so the report back may actually be 13 or 14 months, depending on how long it takes staff to put the numbers together and prepare the report for us. So I think if we can just get some clarification, Your Worship, through staff first, that would satisfy my question there.
Yes, I'll go to Mr. Mayor there.
Three-year worship, so my interpretation of this would be exactly as Deputy Mayor suggested. It would be after 12 months of implementing the bylaw, which would likely be March of next year, so it would be March of 2026.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for that. So happy to second this. I think that there are, to Counselor Ferreira's point, an opportunity here to just strengthen this a little bit by putting a little bit more financial disincentive on bad faith rent evictions here. Particularly, I'm supportive of raising the penalty for the advertising the unit for rent before all of the steps have been taken. I think that's the most egregious activity that a landlord can undertake in bad faith to start advertising a unit that's not actually available, that the N-13 has not been approved, that the licenses and permits have not been approved. And so I'm willing to be supportive of this. And I also think it's really important, and I know that the counsel and I have both spoken about this, that these penalties might also be stackable, so that there could be penalties under multiple categories in this chart levied at the same time, which I think really starts to add up to some pretty significant financial disincentives. So I thank the counsel for his work on this. I know that he wasn't able to move it forward at committee, but I think he's actually made some good points, and I'm happy to support him on this.
Okay, other speakers to this. Go ahead, Counselor Cuddy.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. And as Deputy Mayor said, he's supporting it, and I will support it also. And I want to thank my colleague, Counselor Ferreira, for bringing this forward. Counselor Ferreira has spent a lot of time on this file with me, and it all goes back to last May of '23, when he and I were together at Webster Street. Many of our visitors in the gallery will remember that, and this is the genesis of where it all began. But with reference, Your Worship, to the increases that Counselor Ferreira has suggested, I think they're fine and they're not punitive. And really, they only apply to the rogue landlords, and we don't have many of those. There's just a few, and our good landlords won't be affected by this. And I think this is a very good policy, and I appreciate the Counselor for bringing it forward, and I will be fully supportive. Thank you.
Counselor Trosal.
May I speak to just the amendment and reserve my ability to speak to the entire matter later? Or must I do it all now?
Yes, no, we're on the amendment, so speak to the amendment, please.
Well, I'm going to vote yes on the amendment. I don't see why not, but I'm very skeptical. I'm very skeptical because this amendment- So there's a mover and a seconder for those pieces. I'll go back to Counselor Ferreira, if you want to have your speaking time now, you could, uh, provide your rationale for your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so like, as I said at committee, it's going to constrict the N thirteen loophole, um, with what we can actually do as a municipality. Um, you know, for bad faith landlords who are going to start using, um, or have been using, uh, the N thirteen as, as a means to evict, um, tenants, long-term tenants who are paying affordable rent, they're not going to be able to use that means anymore. And I did say at committee, you know, there, we're, we're going to have to start focusing on the other loopholes that exist. Um, I was trying to make that case at committee, so, uh, it's the same case that I'm trying to make now. And I did say, you know, things along the lines of, we're trying to, I'm trying to add extra spikes, um, in the loophole around the N thirteen, within the N thirteen, and big enough spikes that, you know, any bad faith landlord who is considering this option can see that and would be deterred, um, by that. So specifically, um, I, I'm big on the failure to apply for a license portion, and that would be the initial fee of two thousand dollars a month for the first month, and then two thousand dollars a month the month thereafter, and then up to three months. I believe that's a more than sufficient time, um, for all the permits to be pulled and all the work that has to be done to get that N thirteen. And then after the three months is when we would double, uh, the fee on that. So that would be the first level of deterrent, and most likely, that would be enough, that would weed out, um, all of the bad faith missed, uh, N thirteens that we'll start seeing, that we have seen. Um, since it applies per unit and with the schedule, I, the reason I have that schedule is because, um, you have the income coming in per month on the rent that, um, any, uh, bad faith landlord would be seeking to bring in money when they evict their tenants. So, um, I feel like it would be a good idea to also apply that per month, so you can wipe out those extra profits that any, um, anyone would see or, or seeking to, to gain. Um, and then it would, like I said, it would be doubling to four thousand a month after that. I think those escalating levels of monetary penalties would be very effective, um, and I'm calling it progressive deterrence. I feel like that would be a good way, uh, to work, and it works within what we can do again. So that's what I'm putting on the floor, and I'm hoping for your support. Oh, how, sorry, there's a second amendment. I did add a second amendment to, um, uh, the first initial one that I added to committee, and that would be, uh, basically us to report back after twelve months of the rental unit, rental unit repair license operation, and just to look at the effectiveness on how that is able to, um, achieve the rent evictions prevention. So there's two motions there.
Well, the good news is it's all one motion now, so, uh, and colleagues can read that in the, uh, the Escribe system. It's moved and seconded, I'll continue with the speaker's list on the, uh, proposed amendment. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, uh, and apologies, it's not my intent to cross debate with another member of council, um, but I want to ensure that Counselor Ferreira's interpretation and that, that the staff's interpretation is that the report back in twelve months is after we have twelve months or one year of data, and so the report back may actually be thirteen or fourteen months, depending on how long it takes staff to put the numbers together and prepare the report for us. So I, I think if we can just get some clarification, Your Worship, through staff first, um, that would satisfy my question there.
Yes, I'll go to Mr. Maythers.
Uh, three-year worship, so my interpretation of this would be exactly as Deputy Mayor suggested, it would be after twelve months of implementing the, the bylaw, which, which would likely be March of next year, so it would be March of twenty, twenty-six.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for that. So, uh, happy to, uh, second this. I think that there are, uh, to Counselor Ferreira's point, um, an opportunity here to just strengthen this a little bit by putting a little bit more financial disincentive on bad faith, uh, rent evictions here, uh, particularly, I'm supportive of raising the penalty, uh, for the advertising the unit for rent, uh, before all of the steps have been, uh, taken. I think that's the most egregious, uh, activity that a, a landlord can undertake in bad faith to start advertising a unit that's not actually available, that, uh, the N thirteen isn't, has not been approved, that the licenses and permits have not been approved. And so, uh, I'm willing to, to, uh, be supportive of this. Uh, and I also think it's really important, uh, and I know that, that, uh, the counselor and I have both spoken about this, uh, that these penalties might also be stackable, uh, so that there could be penalties under multiple categories in this chart, uh, levied at the same time, uh, which I think really starts to add up, uh, to some pretty significant financial disincentives. So, uh, I thank the counselor for his work on this. I, I know that he wasn't able to move it forward at committee, but I think he's actually made some good points, and I'm, I'm happy to support him on this.
Okay, other speakers to this. Go ahead, Counselor Cuddy.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. And, um, as, uh, said Deputy Mayor, uh, said, uh, he's supporting it, and I will support it also. And I want to thank my colleague, Counselor Ferreira, for bringing this forward. Counselor Ferreira has spent a lot of time on this, uh, file with me, and, um, it, um, it, it all goes back to last May of twenty-three, when, uh, when he and I were together at Webster Street. Many of our, um, visitors in gallery will remember that, and, uh, this is the genesis of where it all began. But with reference, uh, Your Worship, to, um, the increases that Counselor Ferreira has suggested, I think they're, they're fine and they're not punitive. And, and really, they only apply to the rogue landlords, um, and, and we don't have many of those, there's just a few, and our good landlords won't be affected by this. And I think this is a, a very good policy, and I appreciate the Counselor for bringing it forward, and I will be fully supportive. Thank you.
Counselor Trosaw.
May I speak to just the amendment and reserve my ability to speak to the entire matter later? Or must I do it all now?
Yes, no, we're on the amendment, so speak to the amendment, please.
Okay, well, I'm going to vote yes on the amendment. I don't see why not, but I'm very skeptical. I'm very skeptical because this amendment, while it puts in, you know, better penalties, they're only going to be as good as the enforcement. And I'm skeptical, and I have to be. So I guess I want to ask staff through Mr. Madder, what are we going to do to proactively find these bad landlords that everybody's talking about? So that's my first question to the Chair.
Mr. Maythers.
Uh, through the Chair, so we do have the benefits that, um, in our area, we have also the building division, so we'll be able to track any, anything that's coming in through that area if we feel like that, uh, might be a trigger for our licensing process, is very similar to like a, a business license. If we see that there's work that's being undertaken for a business, we can also, um, ensure that that's covered off as the other licensing compete, uh, component. And as well, um, similar to many other bylaws, if there's any concerns or issues that people have, that they do have our Service London portal, the ability to, to flag that for us if that's something that, uh, that they've seen is happening in the community, and then we can investigate.
Counselor Trosaw.
Um, yes, um, through, through the Chair. I, I guess the building permit, um, route works if they filed for a building permit, but I don't think that that would be very effective if they just, um, tr- try to do the rental eviction without the building permit. After all, they're not complying, they're not complying with the bylaw, um, so, um, I, I can't imagine they're going to run down to City Hall and say, well, we're getting the boat, the building permit to do something that we, I don't, I don't know, I'm still very skeptical about this. I guess, I guess my other question is, um, I, I know Service London is great, I'm always trying to promote Service London, but what, um, could we do something else to be more proactive in terms of letting the tenant community know that this is something that they might want to report, along with some assurance that we're going to take this seriously? Because quite frankly, people don't have a good feeling about the track record of, um, of the city getting back to them on a lot of these types of complaints. And I say that with all due respect and through the Chair, and, and I'm hoping I can get a response to that, that, that deals with something specific.
What's your specific question, Counselor Trosaw?
My specific question is, um, are we going to do anything else by way of education or outreach to tenants to let them know that there is someone in City Hall that wants to hear about this? And will act on it.
Thank you, Mr. Maythers.
Uh, three-year worship, so, um, once this is brought forward, um, and moving into the period when we're actually going to be able to, to bring this, uh, online, which would be March of next year, um, like any of our, uh, initiatives similar to, to, uh, developing new bylaws and enforcement, we want to have that education piece. So we'll have a communications plan, we'll work with our communications group to be able to get the word out through, um, our various methods, whether it's our web or, uh, social media or our display boards, and we'll be able to get the community knowing, and, uh, also through any of our networks that we have that deal with landlords, we can also provide it through that network.
Counselor Trosaw, go ahead.
Yeah, through the Chair, um, in terms of the education pieces, there's, there's nothing in this amendment that speaks to that, would, should that be added? Through the Chair.
Well, Counselor Trosaw, Mr. Maythers just said that that's the approach that they take, so I think you can, uh, you can trust if they're doing an education piece that that's what they're going to do. Um, you could always add an amendment if you like, but I, I, I think we all clearly heard Mr. Maythers talk about the approach they take when there's new bylaws, so-
Well, then, maybe, maybe then through the Chair, he could say what this edu- takes, this education piece is going to add to the education they're already doing, through the Chair.
Mr. Maythers, I don't know if he can answer that yet, or maybe at a future committee, but if he could try to address the counselor's question, um, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, through the Chair, so how we usually, um, share this information, um, is that we would take a multifaceted approach, we work with our communications team, they're the experts in trying to communicate, um, to the public and making sure we get the awareness out. Um, often we're, we're creating materials, so we have a webpage to be able to, to, um, be able to direct people to as well, um, we'd be able to provide that information to any of the ward, uh, any of the counselors for their ward meetings to be able to share it as well, so that people know where to contact, um, uh, and then through any kind of social media presence we have, and then, uh, this will definitely start to escalate as we get towards that specific date where we're, um, when, uh, the, uh, bylaw will come into effect, and that will be, uh, starting this new program. So, um, it definitely will be, you'll see much more from us, and we'll ensure that council's aware of that, and, uh, so that you can share it through your networks, but we can also share it through our, our corporate network.
Counselor Trosaw.
Thank you, uh, and then, I'm going to wrap this up. Finally, um, I assume, I assume that it will be, um, groups like, uh, Lifespin and Acorn are going to be part of, uh, the dissemination of this education, but I think it, it might not be a bad idea. I don't think an amendment is needed, uh, for, for the, uh, for the CAPS committee to take a look at this in a few months to see where the education piece is going. So I, I do intend to bring this back to the CAPS committee for, uh, an informational update, and with that, I'll say, I'm, I'm skeptical, I'm reluctant, uh, but I am going to be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ploza.
Thank you. Um, as a member of committee, I did not, uh, support this at committee, as there was actually no secondar at committee. We received, uh, lots of information from staff, part of that was from Mr. Katolik, and he took us through the process of amps and legislation, uh, that pertains to it. Um, and he was speaking to how they're set up to be encouraging compliance, that people just do the right thing to start with. I know some of us questioned some people's ability to do that, um, versus punitive fines. Um, so looking through you to staff to see if any staff could share any information today about how that's set up for, um, looking for compliance versus punitive, uh, that was just one of my concerns, why I didn't support this at committee, was staff made a recommendation, and are we getting to the punitive territory versus just looking for compliance and educational piece, realizing we always raise rates in the future, and realizing, um, Mr. Katolik did speak to, um, the opportunity for progressive amps later.
Mr. Maythers.
Uh, through your worship, so, uh, at committee, we absolutely shared some of the process and, and some of the legislation under municipal act, um, the administrative monetary penalties, the, uh, the goal is not, is to not be punitive, but to encourage enforcement. Uh, so we brought forward some, a series of recommended amounts, and, uh, we feel that do meet that test. However, I'll just note that there are very few comparators right now, so we only have Hamilton to compare against. So that's why it is, is difficult to come up with that value, but, um, uh, our intention was to review that after one year, um, if, uh, to see how those, uh, that's encouragements were working. Um, but, uh, as, as I mentioned, it is difficult to say what is punitive in this case, but we thought what we brought forward was, uh, absolutely in the line of encouraging enforcement.
Good, okay. Any other speakers? Go ahead, Counselor McAllister.
Uh, thank you, and through the Mayor, um, appreciate Counselor Ferreira bringing this forward. Um, I do think this is an important addition, uh, I think increasing those penalties, uh, will be an important deterrent. Um, in terms of, um, part D, uh, I did just have a question to staff. In terms of the report back after one year, will this include, uh, data that's not necessarily being collected by the city, but some of our, um, say for instance, like legal organizations? I know there has at times been discrepancies in terms of N thirteens that are reported, um, you know, to us versus, you know, what we're seeing in the community. Will there be included in that report, um, a wider discussion in terms of, say, the tenancy advocacy groups in, in, in London to ensure that, um, you know, what they're hearing in terms of issuance of N thirteens complies with what we're seeing on our end?
Mr. Maythers.
Uh, through your worship, so the bulk of the report would be, um, the data that we've collected. However, um, we do have a, a series of different, uh, groups that we work with that we can include within that, some of our consultation about how that bylaw is, is working and functioning. So we'd be happy to include within that, uh, some of that dialogue and what we're hearing from folks. So we can't, of course, require people to provide us information, but if we can do that as part of our process of, uh, of our annual review of this program, then I think that would be beneficial, and we can bring that to council committee.
Counselor McAllister.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Maythers, and through the Mayor. Appreciate that, I do think it's important as we come up, uh, to that year in review, that we ensure that we get that feedback from the community, um, to make sure that this is actually doing what we originally intended for, to do. Thank you.
Okay, other speakers on the amendment. Okay, seeing none, uh, the amendment's moved and seconded, uh, you can see it before you, I'll open that for voting.
Costo votes yes.
Closing the vote motion carries fourteen to zero.
Okay, so now I need a mover and a seconder for the as amended motion. Counselor Ferreira, you still want to move as amended? Okay. Oh, oh, no.
Sorry, I'll do it. I was just so excited to be-
Sure.
Uh, I'll move it as amended.
You move the as amended, I need a seconder for that. Counselor Ferreira, you could do that. Okay, all right, so as amended now moved and seconded, uh, going back to, uh, debate on now on the as amended motion. And given it's as amended, I'm just going to start a new speaker's list. So who'd like to speak to the as amended motion? Okay, I don't see anyone, so that means we can, uh, vote, Sam? Oh, Counselor Trosaw, sorry, go ahead.
I'll make this very brief, and I'll say this through the Chair, and again, I'm saying this in all due respect, I know that many members of staff really work very hard on this, and I know that all the members of the committee took this very seriously, and we spent a lot of time deliberating on this. I have to say how disappointed I am that we are passing this measure, and I am going to support this, because I think this measure, as weak as it is, is better than nothing. And I'm taking staff at good faith that we are going to try to step up our enforcement measures. However, I have to say this, this bylaw is too weak. We had a better model that we could have, we, we could have implemented well. I'm not going to take the council's time to put an, another amendment on the floor, it didn't pass, I mean, it, it, I, I can, I can read the room, but I have to say, and I'll leave it at this through the Chair, how very disappointed I am that the City of London, after all we've been through, and after, and after the compelling testimony that we've heard from person after person at public participation meetings, that we couldn't do better than this in terms of offering accommodation. And I do think that after we do the review, and after we hear from some of our partner groups, we are going to have to revisit this. It's as much as I want this to work, as much as I want this to work, I am still very skeptical, and I'm still, to close, I think that this could have been a much better bylaw, simply using some of the language from Hamilton. But then again, I, I am going to vote for this, but I want everybody to understand that I'm going to be watching this very carefully, and I will bring this back. Thank you very much.
Okay, other speakers? This is the as amended motion. Okay, see, go ahead, Counselor Ramon.
Uh, thank you, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this item. Uh, I, I have to say I feel very similar to Counselor Trosaw. I do think we had the opportunity, we had the opportunity through committee to strengthen this bylaw, to be able to provide additional protections, uh, and for that reason, I would like to refer it back, and I would look to look for a seconder.
Do you want to refer back the whole report and the three bylaws?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a motion to, back, back to Community and Protective Services Committee, uh, with what intention, because we refer back with the intention to do something.
Sure, yep, with the intention, so for the next cycle, and with the intention to add to the, the bylaw, the, uh, appendix E from Hamilton's bylaw, uh, which was referred in our communication, as well as to further explore rental top-ups.
Okay, so there is some language, uh, prepared for that, that has those details in it. I'm going to look for a seconder, and Counselor Hopkins is willing to second, and then I'll go back to, uh, Counselor Ramon to provide some rationale if you'd like now.
Thank you. Um, so I have to say, I'm greatly appreciative of my colleagues and the committee for the work they've done thus far, but I believe the intention was to take this across the finish line, to make sure that we have a bylaw that has a strength to protect renters in our community. And for that reason, I think we have to go ahead with moving a stronger bylaw, and we have the time to do so. So I've heard that the concerns are that if we don't meet our imposed timeline, that we won't be able to get this funded through the multi-year budget in terms of the staffing needed to be able to move forward with this bylaw. And I have to say, and I'm, if it's okay, if I'm permitted to ask a question of, of staff on this, um, but my understanding is through the strong mayor's powers, that at any time, the mayor can bring to, uh, to counsel, uh, the opportunity to, uh, you, to create additional spending opportunities should they be needed, and in this case, if we were to move forward with the bylaw, um, with adding in the top up at a later time, we wouldn't miss, and I think even if we get it in this committee's, next committee cycle, we wouldn't miss the mayoral budget, but if we did, we still have the opportunity to add it, as we've added other things in the past, either through strong mayors or through, uh, just the work of, of council and committee.
uh, Ms. Barbong, I'm going to come to you, so I know you're conferring. I'm coming to you, so I just want to heads up. Any sort of, uh, thoughts that, for the counselor on changes to the budget, uh, mid-cycle, after the budget's been approved or debated, uh, whether our traditional process has been, and Ms. Pollitt, I don't know if you want to add anything that you're aware of, uh, in the legislation, uh, and maybe you don't have this prepared today, about the ability to bring forward, uh, an additional budget or change out of cycle, um, under the legislation, which, uh, I'm not aware of because the timeframes are pretty prescriptive, but I think in the past, we've kind of one-time things until we've got to a budget cycle. So I'm going to go to both staff members, and if you don't have something for today, uh, yeah, certainly, we can follow up on that. Uh, so, Ms. Barbong.
Uh, thank you through the Chair. So, to, speaking generally with respect to a change mid-year, um, if it requires additional levy, that would be something based on municipal act, you'd have to send out additional billing to be able to add that if that would be the case. Um, I don't believe it's something we have ever done before at the City of London, because typically, we would, uh, in many cases, have put forward a temporary source of financing, then pending a council decision through the upcoming budget. Um, certainly, since the start of the multi-year budget, it is not something that, uh, with, with the annual update process, was something that allows the opportunity for changes to be done mid-cycle. So certainly, I, my recommendation to mitigate the, the additional costs of doing that, um, and, and failing a budget process outside of the budget process, the, the best way would be to have an amendment that, or a temporary source of financing, and then have that go through the next annual update, uh, which would be forthcoming, and, and certainly, there is a, a window by the time we have to get our tax billings out, so after that period of time, if there was additional levy, it would have to be a separate mailing, a separate process to add on top of what was already there. So, and, and Ms. Pollitt may have something else to add from the legalities of it.
Ms. Pollitt.
Thank you, and through you, uh, the strong mayor provisions of the municipal act don't specifically deal with this issue, it may be something we could look into further, but on the, on the face of it, it doesn't speak to this issue.
Counselor Ramon.
Thank you, um, just aligning with our next council cycle, so if we push this to the next, uh, CAPS meeting, uh, would that give us time? I know you probably would have presented the strong mayor budget, but would this give us time to fit within the amendment window, just still passes before number, November thirtieth, we were to add it in, uh, the rental top-up?
So, uh, does the next committee cycle align with the, uh, potential amendment cycle for the table budget?
So I'm just looking at the calendar in terms of what the timelines are. So essentially, the budget will be tabled or released on, at the end of October. So the thirty days will start, uh, the clock ticking as soon as the mayor's budget is released. So as long as the final council, and I'm just look, checking the dates here, so-
So, CAPS is October 1st, and then would go to the council. So, it would fall just before the release of the budget. So, from that perspective, there would be the information and the direction to move an amendment during the course of the budget deliberations through the Budget Committee in the month of November. So, it would be one of those things that would be on the floor as part of the council's discussion through the budget. Certainly, from an amendment perspective, if there's a business case there, council at any time can move an amendment through that process. So, it will fit. It will not have any additional information as part of a business case that has been included, but certainly that amendment will fit within the timeline.
Go ahead Counsel Ramon.
Thank you. So, it's my belief from what I've heard today that we have time on our side to be able to work through the rental top-up and the opportunity to look at what was done in Hamilton's most recent updated bylaw in Appendix E before we make a final decision today. So, with time on our side, with the opportunity for further discussion, the opportunity to take this back into a committee cycle and to be able to have more discussion, I think it's incumbent on us, even without further staff report, because I think we have all the information in front of us that we need to be able to have a fruitful discussion. If this is something we really want to do, to strengthen this bylaw, to make it have the teeth it needs to present people from being put on the streets, we have the opportunity to do this today. And all we need to do is a simple referral.
Other speakers to the referral. Counsel Hopkins, and then Counsel Frank.
Yeah, your worship. I second this motion, just to start that conversation. And what I've heard here loud and clear is that it does align with our budget. We do have time for the next cycle. I want to start off with thanking Counsel Faraire and Counselor Cuddy, and Deputy Mayor Lewis, and all the work that they have done trying to strengthen this bylaw. But sitting here, I am not convinced that it is strong enough. And can we do it better? There's an opportunity to do it better. Why wouldn't we try? We've got the time. We can align with the budget. I think we need to do that. And I would encourage us as a council to do the best that we can going forward. So, I'll definitely be supporting the referral.
Counsel Frank.
Thank you. Yes, I'll also be supporting the referral. As it stands right now, I think that we need the top-up and the alternative accommodation in this bylaw to be actually useful. I'll give an example from my ward. And if we just move forward with the bylaws it currently stands with administering the licensing, it actually won't help a bunch of residents who are about to be renovated in my ward. So, even if we move forward with this, the landlord can get these licenses. He's planning on taking a 15-unit, five triplexes, and turning them into 30 units. He would be able to secure these licenses because he will have to move walls and put in stairs and stuff. And all of these pieces, or all these people will essentially be renovated. And at the same time, he could actually just be shuffling people around his units as he renovates them, but he doesn't want to because it would be faster and easier for him to have everybody out, to do it all once. And then if people are able to hang on for 18 months to 24 months, to however long it takes for him to finish all the renovations, which, you know, I don't think that anyone would really be able to find somewhere for a year to two years at a comparable rent and be able to afford it, and then move back into these units, which will also be half the size that they were before. It just won't help to have this licensing alone by itself because these people still end up being, you know, homeless or couch surfing, when really what they need is either to be shuffled around those units as they're being renovated, so alternative accommodation, or if, you know, right now they're paying $900 a month, and then what they're able to find is something like $1,600 a month, they need a top-up. And in my opinion, it actually incentivizes the landlord to complete the renovations faster because they don't want to be paying for somebody to be living somewhere else for a year. If they could finish renovations in six months, wonderful. Then they'd be able to get the person back in the unit, and they wouldn't have to pay those top-ups. So, I think, again, for this bylaw to be particularly useful and to actually make sure we have housing that is at a price point that people can afford, I think that we actually have to add the top-up and the alternative accommodation. So, I'll be supporting this referral because we have the time, as well as we can add this amendment into this multi-year budget process. So, I appreciate the Counselor for bringing this referral forward.
Thanks. And I'll just ask people in the gallery, I don't know where it is, but Counselor has texted me, said they can't hear their colleagues because they can hear. It kind of echoes, so you can actually hear projections. So, if you guys could be quiet, then Counselors can hear each other make their debate. And I'll go to Deputy Mayor Lewis next.
Thank you, your worship. So, I will not be supporting the referral. And I'm going to provide a couple of comments here specifically around the referral. We've heard that the bylaw isn't strong enough, that it's weak. But we've already heard Mr. Maythers say, "Hamilton's really the only comparator so far in the provincial jurisdiction of Ontario." And with all due respect, we can't compare ourselves to other provincial jurisdictions. Planning Acts and Residential Tenancies Acts and all of those things are different province to province. So, Hamilton is our only comparator. We don't have a bylaw like this in another city that actually has any data to say that it's weak. We haven't tried it. And to Counsel Faraire's point about a report back in 12 months, when we have that data, there may be some need to tweak this bylaw, to make some adjustments, to make some changes. But what we do know about the Hamilton bylaw already is that it is flawed to the point where the City of Hamilton has not only failed to fully implement it, but is actually scrambling to implement exemptions around the top-up and alternate accommodation pieces. Mr. Ktolik raised that at committee, for those who attended or watched the livestream. Mr. Ktolik also, at committee, advised, and through you Chair, probably to Ms. Pollitt, but if another member of staff needs to answer that, certainly. But Mr. Ktolik advised at the committee, or cautioned at committee, that should we add in the Appendix E, that it would be his advice to us that another round of public participation meetings would have to be held. So, we're not talking about one cycle now. We're talking about multiple cycles because the bylaw, as advertised on the public notice, did not actually include Appendix E. So, we've had advocates come to speak to what was advertised about why they think it should be stronger. But an equal opportunity has not been provided to the Property Management Association and landlord folks to comment if E was actually in the bylaw. To their understanding, it wasn't. So, we now haven't provided them an opportunity to comment either. So, through you Chair, if staff can respond to whether or not, in their legal opinion, another PPM would be advisable to uphold the bylaw, should it be challenged, and not having provided an additional PPM, I'd be looking for staff's comment on that.
Okay, I'll go to Ms. Pollitt.
Thank you, and through your worship. Yes, the recommended approach would be to hold another PPM to allow for a fulsome public consultation. That's the typical way we do things.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer because I think it's important to recognize the process here. Once there's a PPM, then additional direction to staff would be provided for finalizing a bylaw to bring back for us in another committee cycle. So, at minimum, we're talking two more committee cycles. And we've already heard Mr. Maythers earlier in this meeting reference that even if passed today, this bylaw would not be implemented fully until March of 2025. So, every delay that we want to make today is going to mean more months in 2025 before protections are already in place. If we defeat this referral, which I'm encouraging you to do, and pass the bylaw as is, in 12 months, we will have some data back. We will be able to evaluate that, and we will be able to look at whether or not we need to make changes. But until then, we are basing our opinion on whether or not this bylaw is strong enough, on speculation and opinion, which is fine. We can have our opinions. But the results in Hamilton have not shown that their bylaw is actually a good model to use because they are already scrambling to implement a new exemption regime exactly around the piece that the Counselor is suggesting we need time to add in, the Appendix E portion around rental top-ups and alternate accommodations. So, I will not be supporting the bylaw. I am willing to consider changes after we've got a year's worth of data, but I'm not willing to delay further. And should the referral pass and changes be made, I probably won't be in a position to support a bylaw with those pieces in based on the experience in Hamilton so far.
Counsel Faraire.
Thank you, Mayor. The Deputy Mayor pointed out the first point I was going to make with respect to the public participation meeting. I don't, like, we're already really tight. Like, yes, there is time, the timelines. But I did hear that City Treasurer said that we wouldn't have any description for the business case itself. If that's what you said, that's correct, I believe. No, it's not a question. But basically, just going to the public participation meeting itself, we would have to have another PPM. We would have to have people come up and speak to the new bylaw because this would be a very significant material change that we have to the bylaws we see right now. So, I'm not going to go too far into that point. But I will say, just kind of speaking to, I guess, some doubts from some Counselors with how the bylaw is written up right now and the licensing regime is written up right now. You know, all of us, I know, have different opinions on how to bring this together. And it was very difficult to kind of find something that works for everybody, and that actually works. I have faith in the licensing program that we have right now, especially with the amendments that we've seen. I have faith because the scope that we are trying to combat here is to go after bad-faith landlords who are trying to misuse the N-13 so they can have the bottom line of removing a long-term tenant that's paying affordable rent, so they can bring in another tenant, so they can have increases per month on the unit that they have. We are trying to stop that alone. So, when we, especially, I guess, with the fees that we have just amended, that will take away that ability. That goes right to the bottom line of the whole reason that's driving these bad-faith landlords in the first place. They're being driven by a pursuit of higher profits. With the amendments that we have, with the licensing regime that we have, those higher profits are not going to be met. As a matter of fact, it's going to be, they're probably going to lose money. And that is the deterrence that I'm trying to bring through. That is the deterrence that we have voted on here 14 to none. So, I do have faith in this program. But we can't predict everything. We can only plan so far, and the real world will tell us different things. That's why we have also approved that after 12 months of the program being in operation, to have that review come back, to see where we're at, to just have a little check, to see how it's working. At that point, we will have the data. We will see how this is working, and we can bring other ideas. But right now, I have very good faith on how this program is working. So, I would just say, I appreciate the 14 to none vote to approve that. And I have very good faith that you are going to see no N-13s that are being misused. The N-13 process will now, just because we have that extra protection, that extra cover from the city perspective, N-13s will be issued out the way they were supposed to.
Counsel McAllister.
Thank you through the Mayor. Appreciate Counsel Ramon bringing it forward, Counsel Hopkins seconding. This is what Counsel Trosa and I were fighting at committee for, so I'm happy to see it come back. And again, I'm going to speak to a lot of the points I've already made, but I think they're worth reiterating again. To me, the missing component of this bylaw is keeping people housed. And fundamentally, I think that's something we need in there to strengthen it. I hear time and time again, and Counsel Frank hit it right on the head in terms of the shuffling that goes on. And if people are displaced, people can't wait. We need to have these extra protections in place so people are either able to find alternate accommodations or have those rental top-ups to stay housed. Because what I'm personally seeing is the affordability crisis on the ground. And what's happening is when people are renovated, they cannot find other accommodation. And this is why I think we need to strengthen this now because we want to fundamentally keep people housed. As I said, at committee, we spent a lot of time talking about homelessness. This is something that we can do to keep people housed. And I think it's vitally important that we strengthen it. Yes, it'll take a bit more time, but I think it's worth the wait, and we should spend the time and do this right from the outset.
Counsel Cuddy.
Thank you, your worship and through you. There's an old saying that many of you may have heard, perfection is the enemy of done. You know, not everything's perfect. And we can keep tinkering and toying with things until we think we may have made it perfect. But clearly, the Hamilton bylaw is not perfect. They can't even enforce parts of it. Mr. Ktolik spoke to Deputy Mayor Lewis and I about this multiple times, about better ways to improve it, and we have made those improvements. If we keep playing with this, it will never get implemented. We will go through cycles. Our residents need this now, and we need to implement it now. You know, I don't understand why we haven't, I don't understand why colleagues don't understand that Mr. Ktolik and his team can come back to us later with improvements if he thinks, or this council thinks, we need them. This is something that can be changed as it goes. So, we need to implement this now. We need to pass it today and move on. Because if we don't, if we keep trying to make a perfect model, it may never come. I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Okay, any others on the referral? Counsel Privile, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I will not be supporting this referral either, and there are a few reasons. The first one is, Hamilton, we are, I love to benchmark ourselves and do the comparative analysis with other municipalities that have something, and it works. I love to do that. Their bylaw, their new regulation, it hasn't even started yet. It's starting January 25. Also, there is also, as was stated by Deputy Mayor, is the exemption. And I really want to see how City of Hamilton is going to deal with this because the reason for it is, if there are bad actors, and right away when you see, when they see an exemption, that I don't believe that they would not try to take advantage of it. The third reason why I'm not going to support it is, as was said already, I'll repeat it though. This might not be perfect, but there is already a certain degree of protection for the ones who came to the gallery today, and for all your friends and family. And I think that that's the priority. Let's get it done. Let's look at Hamilton. If there are some good things to learn from, we'll be more than happy to. But let's move on and make sure that you, your friends, your family have some protection as of tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers to the referral? Okay, so the referrals on the floor. Oh, yeah, Counsel Trosa, you haven't spoken to the referral yet, so go ahead.
I'll keep this very brief because I spoke to this a little bit before, but I'll be certainly supporting the referral. And I'm grateful to the Counselors for bringing it forward. This is not a question of perfect being, we're nowhere near that. This bylaw is really too weak, and it's fundamentally flawed. I think the question of exemptions is a false flag because if there's an alternative to the top-up, which comes out of the landlord's pocket, that takes care of that. I think what's going on here is that there's really sort of a double standard emerging about what we need in new public participation meeting. Let me just remind people that in the council packet, in the committee packet for the public participation meeting, was information that I put in there about the Hamilton bylaw. So, to suggest that nobody's ever heard about the Hamilton top-ups or the other Hamilton measures is really false. This was dealt with at the last public participation meeting, and it was dealt with very clearly. But let me ask through the Chair, a technical question. Is there a statutory requirement? Or can you point to the authority for a statutory requirement for another public participation meeting on this? And I'll direct that through the Chair to whoever wants to answer it. A statutory requirement.
Okay, thanks. I'll go to Ms. Pollitt.
Thank you, and through your worship. There is no statutory requirement, but it is a procedural fairness matter.
Okay, Counsel, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'll get back to that when we get to the Planning Committee. But for now, I'm just going to say, I think, given the fact that many of the speakers at the public participation meeting spoke to this exact point. And the people who are in opposition to this bylaw had the opportunity to do so. It wasn't a surprise. This is not something that just came up a few days before the meeting. So, I really worry that we're developing, if we defeat it on the grounds of another public participation meeting is necessary, I think that's very weak. And if we defeat it on the grounds that we don't have time to implement it in the budget cycle, as we've heard, that's very weak. And if we defeat it on the grounds that, well, we'll have to issue all these exemptions, that's also very weak because we could have the top-up. So, I think for all the reasons that I've just stated, plus what other Counselors have said, it would really be good policy, and it would not violate any principle of fairness to proceed with this referral. And I'll be voting yes on the referral. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers to the referral? Okay, seeing none, so this is on the referral, which you see before you, moved by Counsel Ramon, seconded by Counsel Hopkins. We'll open that for voting.
Trosa votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion fails.
Closing the vote, motion fails, five to nine.
Okay, we're back to the main as amended motion, of which there's been two speakers, councillor Trossow and councillor Ramon. Any other speakers on the main as amended motion? Go ahead, councillor McAllister.
Thank you. Through the mayor, a bit of deja vu in terms of the conversation we've had here, very similar to what we have in a committee. But as I said before, I think it really warrants that further discussion. I'm going to support what we have. As has been said a lot today, it's not perfect, but I will absolutely look to our 12-month review to ensure that this is doing what we wanted it to do. So again, thank you for all the work that's gone into this. I know it's been a bit of a struggle to get here, but I do think having something on the books will provide some protection, which is absolutely necessary right now. Thank you.
Other speakers to the as amended motion. Go ahead, councillor Ferrera.
Thank you. So I guess I'll just give some thoughts. I'm not going to try to speak to all the points that were made, but you know, like, this is a very, very, very tough decision. And I know that some people are not happy with the direction that we're going. But I do have faith that this is going to work. I've been really trying to explain, you know, just bringing in the scope and bringing in really what we're trying to do to combat those bad faith landlords who are really just trying to increase their profit with the use of just evicting tenants. I have heard that we're trying to keep people in housing. That's the whole point of the motion that I brought with the deterrence. That doesn't even get to the point where the tenant would be removed in that situation, in that bad faith situation, have to find other accommodations. This is so that bad faith landlord who's looking to use that as a method to kick someone out, won't even use that. Now, I did point out that we are now, as we constrict this loophole, the other ones are still wide open. And you're going to start seeing a flood of those being used. I said at committee, the reason, one of the, a few things brought me to council. But the real thing that kind of lit the fire behind me was an N-13 that was served in bad faith to a family who lived right beside me, very good friends of mine. That, or sorry, an N-12 was served to that family. And that N-12 cited that the son of the owner of that building was going to move in. He didn't move in. He didn't move in for a year and a half. After I became councillor, he has moved in, which is interesting. But I'm just saying, this, we need to start focusing in that area. We need to focus on the other areas where these other loopholes are still wide open. I will be bringing that. I will be working with you on that in the future. Speaking to the retroactivity, this, no matter what we do with this bylaw, we are not going to be able to help anybody on Webster because we can't apply it retroactively. We're not going to be able to help anyone on Nelson because we're not going to be able to apply it retroactively. I want to be able to give the tool, this extra protection to the tenants of the future who come to me, who say, I've just been served an N-13 and I know that this is completely bogus. We need to be able to give them that. That's why I don't want to see this, I didn't vote for that referral. And just speaking to the fact that I have faith, going back to the scope, we are trying to stop the bottom line. And the bottom line that bad faith landlords are using is to just increase their profits. This schedule that we've just approved will wipe all those extra profits out. They're not going to use the N-13 anymore. They're going to use something else. So we need to start focusing on the next, the next item. Because this is going to be closed off. I have very good faith. And because, like I said, we don't know everything, we have that review coming after 12 months, starting from the part, from the point that it gets implemented to 12 months after that. At that point, we'll get some good data and we'll see where it goes. We'll clean some things up. I have pretty good faith that we're going to see that the N-13s that have came through admin are going to be N-13s that were not bad faith. We can't stop them all because there is a reason that the N-13 was created in the first place. We are just trying to stop that N-13 being used in a way that it wasn't meant to be. Being used in a way for some individual, some owner of some property, who's just trying to use that because they want to just get rid of a low-paying rent tenant. So thank you for defeating the referral and thank you for approving the amendments that I had. I will continue to be working on this closely with colleagues that I have clearly disagreed with on the way we're going about things, but that's just the name of the game. So I guess I'm done.
Thank you. I myself, next on the speakers list. I'll turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you. I will take the chair and recognise Mayor Morgan.
Thank you. And through the presiding officer, I want to say to councillor Ferrera, it's going to happen a lot at council. People are not going to be happy with every decision we make. It's because people don't all fundamentally agree across the city on what we should do on any given issue, how fast we should do it, what the parameters are that we should. But here's what I see on this issue as it's evolved. I see council relatively unanimous in saying, yes, you know, despite the decisions the province has made, the municipality does have a role in trying to protect individuals against rent evictions. I see council unanimously say, we saw the staff report and we think we should go further on fines. And what I see a disagreement on is when we should consider next steps on this, right? And I'm not even sure that it's that far away on if. And I'm not even sure that, as much as I heard colleagues talk about the public participation meeting, I'm not even sure that that's, it's certainly not a major factor for me on this. And it's not something that I think is necessarily holding people back from the next step in the action. I think there's a number of things out there in play, whether you're considering the advice of our staff, whether you're considering any of the in-camera advice that we've received, or whether you just want to see a little bit more information about how this plays out in other communities. I'm not even sure that we disagree that we're willing to consider next steps. I think we have a slight disagreement on timing on that. And so I just want to say to those who may not be happy with how far we've gone at this point, we have decided to take steps here. We may not be happy with how many we've taken, but we will continue to work with the community. We will continue to monitor how this plays out in other communities. We have a review that will be conducted as part of this bylaw. And I think we're relatively unanimous as a council to say, we've got to do something here. But at the same time, we have to also be involved in the advocacy to other levels of government to ensure that those level of governments ensure that there are proper protections for tenants as well. And so, yes, municipalities should take some actions on this within their sphere of jurisdiction, but so should other levels of government as well. And so we'll continue that dialogue at the same time. And I wanted to say, I appreciate the debate that colleagues had here today. I know we didn't agree, but I felt it was respectful, it was articulate, and people got their points across. And we'll make a decision on this next step together in a few minutes. And then we'll consider what we do next, as we get more information from our staff, as we bring this into fruition, as we fund it in the budget, and as we see how the information plays out in other, how the procedure plays out in other municipalities. I can make those decisions together as a council. So I just wanted to say, I'll certainly be supporting the as amended motion. I think we do need to take this step. I think we do need to fund this step in the budget. We'll have that discussion when the budget is tabled. But I appreciate the debate today and I appreciate that although we have a disagreement, I think there's a lot of things that we agree on in this space.
Thank you, your worship. I will return the chair to you with no one else on the speakers list at this time.
Thanks. I'll look for any other speakers on this who haven't spoken to the as amended motion. Okay, seeing none, then we will open the vote on the as amended motion.
Trossow votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries, 14 to zero.
Okay. Chair, you're back to presenting now? You've got one item left, I think, on your.
I have, I have one item left. It was pulled, poll request for item 2.35 on the council agenda for regulating maximum temperature in rental units. So I'll put that one on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for any speakers to that. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. I did ask councillor Ferrera to pull this. I don't need to litigate this much. I don't know whether any colleagues agree with me or not, but I did ask for it to be pulled because I'm not going to be supporting this. And I just want to briefly share why. Under OREG 517/06, the province, under its vital services bylaw, or under its vital services legislation, regulates heating, and that runs from September 15th to June 1st. There is no such regulation on maximums. And while I recognise that this is a growing concern and issue, I believe that we are treading into provincial jurisdiction and territory here. I believe that a better approach would be for AMO and OBCM and others to lobby the province for some changes to its Residential Tenancies Act 2006 and look for amendments to that OREG 517. I don't think that individual cities going through a number of bylaw iterations, testing out case law challenges and things like that, which will eventually come from this, is the way for us to go. I do recognise it as an issue, but I don't think that this is a space where we should be putting staff time and resources. I think this is a space where, if colleagues feel that this is truly an issue, that I'd certainly be supportive of a motion to come through, a future caps that said, you know, calling on the mayor or AMO to advocate for some changes to the provincial legislation. But I'm not supportive of undertaking new municipal bylaw legislation. And I think we're actually setting ourselves up to go through the same process that we've just gone through on the rent evictions, where there will be debates about, can we force landlords to retrofit? I will say, in reviewing the Ontario legislation, it's very clear landlords can pass along the electricity costs of air conditioners to their tenants if they're added. I think that there is a lot of perilous pitfalls to us exploring this on our own. And so I really think that this is more of an advocacy piece for AMO and OBCM than for our staff to start creating draft bylaws, which I think in the end is going to ultimately satisfy no one. Because we're going to have people saying, it doesn't go far enough. We're going to have others saying it's going to go too far. And we're going to spend a lot of staff time and energy on something that I truly believe is provincial jurisdiction. Our vital services bylaw municipally aligns with the current provincial legislation. And I think we need to continue to follow aligning to that so that our bylaws do have the legal backing of the province to be upheld.
Other speakers? Councillor Privill, go ahead.
Thank you. I will be brief. I did not support it at the committee meeting. I will not be supporting it today and just agreed what was exactly set by Deputy Mayor. And I'm just going to add to it. It almost seems like, you know, the issue we just dealt with now and looking at this one, almost really truly opposite and not helping the situation. Retrofitting AC units, and especially when it comes to the central air, it's very expensive, it's time-consuming, and there potentially could be, with central air, additional rent evictions. And if not, certainly the investment by the building owners, guess who would at the end be paying for it? The tenants. And that's why, that's the reason why I'm not supporting it, in addition to what was just stated by Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Councillor Trossow.
Through the chair, I have to start, I have to start by saying, that guess who game was just like, no, that's not necessarily the case. Because under provincial law, in order for the landlord to be able to get an additional rent increase, it has to go a certain amount. And we don't, we don't know that's the case. So just to sit there and say, guess who is going to pay for it? The tenant. That's just, that's speculative.
Point of order.
Well, it's not, it's just not right.
Sorry, point of personal privilege. Hold on. Just give me one sec before I address the point of personal privilege. Okay, I'm going to be in a little bit of a disadvantage here because I was working out a problem with the clerk when I missed what was said. So if you could be specific about what your point of personal privilege is so that I can hear what was.
Yeah. Thank you, your worship. For the councillor to say that another member of council, or any member of council, is simply just sitting here and speculating. With all due respect, I've done my homework. I read the Ontario OREG specifically out. I have had a couple of conversations with members of our staff team. I'm not sitting here doing nothing and speculating.
Okay, just give me one sec.
So can I respond to that? Because I wasn't talking about.
No, no, no. That's not how it works. Give me a second. So here's what's going to happen. I'm going to say, from what I heard about the point of personal privilege, if indeed it was said that way, I would ask that it be rephrased and we will make the assumption that our colleagues have indeed, when they stand up and debate, have done their own due diligence to the capacity that they feel is necessary to make decisions. Given I was talking to the clerk and I did not hear specifically what you said, councillor Trossow, I also give some benefit of the doubt. And so what I would ask is if, as you continue your dialogue, if you could just rephrase it in a way, should there have been a problem there. But I'm being a little bit cautious here because I actually didn't hear exactly what you said. So I would just ask generally for colleagues to give some respect for each other in that space, not saying that, you know, you did something specifically as was described or not, because I'm not going to presume that something was one way or another without going back and listening to the video, which honestly, trust me, you don't want me to do, because I'm sure we want to continue with the meeting. So if you could continue your dialogue in a way that is respectful of that piece, which I would ask of every member of council, that we've all done the work that we feel is necessary to make the debates that we feel we need to make and stick to the points of substance in the debating. So continue with your comments.
Thank you. And I'm just going to get to the main point here then. And the main point here is, I don't dispute what's in the OREG. And I don't dispute the availability of an above-board rent increase for landlords. I don't dispute that. What I do dispute is whether or not that ousts municipal jurisdiction over something as basic, the health and safety and general welfare, as proper temperature. The city, the city has very broad police powers under the municipal act, section 10, subdivision 2. I talk about that act a lot. And there's a section that talks about the city has powers regarding health, safety and welfare. And what we're talking about doing here falls within that. And it falls within the OREG too. That doesn't mean they're in a conflict. So just because the city is getting into an area that the province has talked about, doesn't mean it's a conflict. You need a lot more than that. I don't want to go into closed session to debate that. Maybe someone else wants to. But we've got no information from staff that this bylaw is in violation of provincial law. Okay? So I think, I think what we have on the table right now is a question of whether we want to protect our residents with respect to these temperature issues. And I certainly hope that the majority of this council will do that. Because people have a right to live in units that are safe. And I think that we, we're getting very close to an unsafe situation here. And I guess the only other question I have to the staff, or perhaps through a member of a board, is, has the medical officer of health or the health unit had anything to say about this? I'll leave that through the chair and thank you.
So I don't know if we have the answer to that. I don't see any of our staff saying they have the answer to that right now. I don't see any councillor saying that they have the answer to that. So I don't think there's an answer to your question here, but you could certainly reach out to the medical officer of health at a future time. Councillor, I'm sorry, we don't have that answer for you. And I appreciate.
Okay, so just in closing then, I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's anything here that's demonstrably hostile to the city taking this, taking this step. I haven't heard it. And so I would urge people to vote for this, for this motion. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll look for any other speakers on this. Councillor Frank, go ahead.
Thank you. And yes, I feel like I do start off a lot of my sentences this way, but in absence of provincial leadership on this file, I think it's incumbent that the municipality does intervene. And I think that we have to start regulating maximum temperatures in rental units, because people have died from heat stroke in apartments that don't maintain a livable temperature. So in order to avoid people dying in apartments across the city because of overheat or heat stroke, I think that we should look forward to this bylaw. And I think that, again, we can have a debate. We can get information from landlords. We can discuss it with the health unit. But I am fully prepared to start moving forward on this to try and keep people safe and alive.
Any other speakers? Okay, so what we have before us is the committee's recommendation, moved by the chair. I'll open that for voting.
Trossow votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries, eight to six.
Okay, councillor, I think that's it, isn't it?
That's right. That completes the 11th report of the Community and Protective Services Committee.
That's right. That completes the 11th report of the Community and Protective Services Committee.
Okay, uh, next is Civic Works Committee. I'll look to Counsel Hopkins to present that.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I'd like to put the 12th meeting of Civic Works Committee on the floor. I have had no one reach out to me to have anything pulled, so I will put, uh, forward the six consent items.
Sure. Uh, would anybody like anything dealt with separately? The chair is willing to put that on the floor? Is there any discussion on any of these items by colleagues? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could just, uh, thank the committee for their questions and to thank staff for their recommendations. Uh, it's, uh, if you ever wonder where we spend all our money, it's on infrastructure, but I appreciate the work that the committee and staff have done.
Great, we'll open that for voting then.
Trosa votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
All right, thank you. On to 8.4, the 14th Report of SPPC. I'll go to Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, worship. I am pleased to stand and re- and, uh, present the 14th Report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee. Uh, I have been asked by Counsel Privile to pull item six so that he can vote separately on that. Uh, I have not been asked to pull any other items, so unless counsel wants anything else dealt with separately, I am prepared to move one through 10 excluding six.
Would anybody like anything else dealt with separately? Okay, it looks like that motion can be made, uh, so it's, it's moved, uh, by the chair. Uh, so that's everything with the exception of six. Any discussion on those items? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open this for voting.
Counsel Trosa. Second call, Counsel Trosa. Marking Counsel Trosa absent, closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to zero.
Go ahead.
And your worship, I'm now prepared to put item six on the floor. Uh, this is the Tourism London Annual Report on the Municipal Accommodation Tax.
Okay, that is on the floor. I'll look for any speakers. Counsel Privile, go ahead.
Thank you, and I would like to take, take this opportunity to thank, uh, truly greatly thank the entire accommodation sector because since 2018, they have collected for us over $16 million, and this amount was, or some of it, has been very well spent for a lot of tourism initiatives, infrastructure, et cetera. Uh, my disappointment, and I'm going to be as long as I was last time, I truly believe we left, this was a great opportunity for us, and we missed out on having a better deal for our community and for tourism and have this sector on the board with us. And that's my disappointment because I don't see this as a win-win. I see this as a lose-lose, and we lost an opportunity to do better, as I said, for our city, for the tourism, and have the entire accommodation sector behind us. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers to this? Uh, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Trosa votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to one.
Okay, that concludes SPPC, but I believe you're presenting the Planning Committee Report, 13th Special Report of Planning Committee on behalf of Chair Lehman, so go ahead.
Uh, yes, your worship, as the vice chair, uh, with the chair not able to join us today, I'm happy to present the 13th Special Report of the Planning and Environment Committee. Uh, I know the colleagues have asked for, uh, a couple of items to be pulled from the 14th report, but this is the 13th report, and I've not been made aware of anything to be dealt with separately here, so I'm prepared to put the entirety of the report on the floor.
Okay, would anybody like anything dealt with separately from this report? Okay, seeing none, the whole thing is on the floor. Any discussion on this, the items in this report? Okay, seeing none, we can open that for voting.
Trosa votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
And, uh, the 14th Report of Planning and Environment Committee, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. So at this time, uh, having had colleagues communicate with some, uh, requests to have items pulled, I am prepared to put items one through three, five, six, seven, eight, and 10 on the floor, uh, with items, that would be noting that items four and nine would be dealt with separately.
Okay, so four and nine separate. Would anybody else like anything else separate? Okay, so we can have a motion for everything with the exception of four and nine, uh, moved by the vice chair. Any discussion on any of these items? Go ahead, Counsel Ramen.
Uh, thank you, and through you, and just briefly, I just wanted to thank, uh, the applicant for the discussion on 80 to 82 Baseline Road West. Um, I understand, uh, you know, at committee, I didn't support it partially, mostly because, uh, of staff's refusal on, due to the, uh, parking situation on this, uh, particular property. Um, and in speaking with the applicant, uh, I've had some opportunity to hear from him about, or hear from them, sorry, about their thoughts on, uh, how they plan to address, uh, the parking shortage, and so I'm optimistic and hopeful, and so I'll support it. Thank you.
Any other speakers on anything in that grouping? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this for voting.
Counsel Trosa. Second call, Counsel Trosa. Marking Counsel Trosa as absent, closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to zero.
Thank you, worship. I'm now prepared to put item four on the floor. This is two through four, Audrey Ave, uh, 186 through 188 here on Street, uh, as it relates to bill number 327 on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. I'll look for any speakers. Counsel Trosa? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, I asked for this to be pulled, uh, I asked for this to be upheld, um, because I cannot support this. Uh, I, I talked about this in some detail at the, at the planning committee, and I'm not going to repeat everything I said. I'm not going to repeat what Professor Patel or other people from Bruffdale have said, but I do want to, I do want to stress one point. We need to take a comprehensive approach to where we're going to put density, and I'm going to talk about this in more detail. But for now, I just want to say, this is a, this is a one-off spot zoning that is going to create inconsistencies in the area. The Bruffdale Community Association gave this a lot of thought, because we understand that there is a housing crisis. They made that clear in their letter, but what they suggested I thought was very helpful. And I don't think the planning committee gave their suggestion, uh, an ample, an ample hearing. So I just want to, I want to raise it again right now. What they suggested was that not a full, not a full, full-blown area study, but a minor little study in the area from Richmond, over a few blocks up to, up to Bruffdale, up to the campus, be looked at for, for opportunities for intensification. I would like to know how much take-up there has been on the up to four units on the property. And I'd also like, I'd also like to suggest, and I don't want to get ahead of, uh, the situation tonight, because we're going to get to this next, but I think that there's some areas that are not neighborhood connectors. In that Bruffdale community, that would be really good candidates for stacked townhouses. Maybe even more than four stories, because we've got a lot of dilapidated properties that are not being cared for well, that have sort of public nuisance implications in that area, and I think it would make a lot of sense. I'd like to defer, but I understand that we have Planning Act time limitations, so I'm going to ask that we vote this down and think about how we're going to increase the intensification in that neighborhood more broadly. And, 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 and in a wa- in a way that really looks at what's going on in the ground and, um, doesn't just, just, just doesn't respond the way this application is. So I, I, I thi- I think that, um, this is, this is, I don't think this is in keeping with the near campus neighborhood plan. And I should point out that, well, I should point out that the entire property, the entire property is taken up by bulk, by building, or by parking lot, that there's no open space on this property. There, there's no mix on this property between, uh, places where people can go outside and have recreation opportunities and, 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 and the built-up area and the parking lot. And the other thing I should point out is, there's only two, there's only two bicycle parking spaces allocated here. So we're, we're, we're saying that this is going to create like a tight urban environment. It, the only two parking spaces for bicycles, really? I, I just, I just think that's inadequate. And finally, the, the, a lot, a lot was said at the planning committee about how this is going to create affordable housing opportunities, and the only number that was thrown around was $950. The only number, the only number that was thrown around was $950. Now, it's not $950 per unit. That was $950 for a bedroom. I'm sorry, it might have been 900, but it was up in that range. That's not affordable. It's not affordable. It's not environmentally sensitive. It doesn't, it doesn't keep, it does, it doesn't keep in, in, in effect the, 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 um, the balance that we want to see in new developments between built-up area and open space. And it certainly doesn't do anything in terms of bicycle parking. So for, for a number of reasons. Uh, I, I'm going to ask my colleagues to vote against this. I know the planning committee voted for this unanimously, but I just think this is a bad development. It has not been thought out well, and I think in terms of planning for that entire Bruffdale area, we can do a lot better. So please vote no.
Okay, any other speakers? Go ahead, Counsel Ferrera.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, just some questions on this one, uh, with respect to the near campus neighborhoods. Um, so, you know, the nearest campus neighborhoods, uh, the changes, um, there to ensure, uh, the den, like, near campus neighborhoods are to ensure, um, intensity, density, and the, the lot size does not lead to undesirable changes, and they're supposed to make sure that the intensification, uh, in these areas are, um, I guess reasonable. I just wanted to know, just to confirm with staff, does this application, um, find itself within the, within the near campus neighborhood? Is it a contravention or anything like that?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, worship. Yes, that's correct. The planning report evaluated in the context of the near campus neighborhoods and, uh, met all the, the tests in terms of the policy framework, and that's why staff recommended approval.
Go ahead.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other speakers to this? Okay, then the committee's recommendation is on the floor. We'll open that for voting.
Trosa votes no.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to one.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. I'm now prepared to put item nine on the floor. Um, this is the London Plan Heights review. Uh, I know there are some colleagues, uh, four counselors had wanted this pulled to, uh, vote on some things separately to make some amendments or referrals or other things. Um, I did circulate as well, um, uh, through the clerks this morning, and with thanks to Mr. Maythers and his staff for helping with the language, a, a housekeeping amendment that I'm hoping we can deal with first because it's relevant to the whole thing, whatever we do with it. Um, and that language, uh, reads that the civic administration bring forward a report to a future planning and environment committee, providing a planning review of all the September 10th public participation meeting and September 24th council meeting, owner submissions not addressed by city council's approval of phase two of the section 26 review of the London Plan. Um, I did provide the rationale to colleagues in the email. Um, I will speak to that in a moment, once we have confirmed if there's a secondor for that.
Yeah, so what I prefer to do is have someone else just present the item. You can move your amendment. Then after, in the as amended, you can go back to, to presenting on it if you want. So it would be my preference if there's another committee member who's willing.
Okay, well, I will, uh, see if Counsel.
It's okay if you're, if you're, because you can switch back to him after his amendment's done, so Counsel Ramen will present the item. It's going to get as amended anyways, uh, assuming it passes, and if you don't want to present it after that, we can switch someone up. But you're moving an amendment, so Counsel Ramen's presenting the item, the deputy mayor's moving an amendment. Is there a secondor for the amendment that was described? Counsel Cuddy, okay, we're going to have a debate about the amendment. Do you want to provide the rationale?
Uh, certainly. So, uh, during the, the, uh, PPMs that were held on September 10th, and then a couple of follow-up cor- pieces of correspondence have come in from individual property owners who were very, looking for very site-specific, um, considerations, particularly, uh, around some of the areas where we're looking for intensification along, uh, urban corridors or primary transit areas, where, um, they were just on the other side of the line. A- and, uh, actually, your worship, you had asked, um, a question of staff on the floor, and there was a comment that we would, civic administration will report back, um, at a future meeting on those specific sites. Um, and then since that time, a couple of additional communications have come in. This just provides the direction from a housekeeping perspective for civic administration to connect with those individual site-specific requests, follow up on them, bring back a report to us, whatever the outcome of that might be, uh, through their discussion with the property owners. So I'm hoping colleagues can support that. Uh, you know, it was nice to actually have a couple of property owners come forward and say, uh, actually, I'd like to go even a little bit higher. I'm right next door, um, to where you're allowing 15 or where you're allowing 25 stories, and I'd like to be considered to allow for that too. Um, so since they're, they're looking for that opportunity to add some increased density along an area where we're already doing that, I hope colleagues can support this housekeeping amendment.
Okay, any, uh, discussion on the amendment? Go ahead, Counsel Stevenson.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if that could also include anyone who made a presentation at that committee that maybe would have said something different had they known that an amendment was on the floor to see if there's a site-specific, um, issue there to be addressed.
So I, I can ask our staff that. I'm just reading the actual language of the amendment. And it's providing a planning review of all the public participation, of the public participation meeting, council submissions. So I'm not sure that that's in scope. I'll go to Mr. Maythers, just to make sure.
Through the, through the chair, so how we would interpret this, uh, this language would be that if you came forward, you gave a submission, um, you were outside of the scope of our review, but it's, it's, um, related to either the heights review, the transit village or major shopping areas, and you came to speak about those matters, then we would, if they wanted to provide further information after the fact, that we can, we can accept that. But if it's, as long as it's tied to these three matters, because there's always the opportunity for anyone to bring forward a, um, a bylaw zoning application, there's just, of course, the cost associated that, but if this, if it's related to these three matters, that's what we're thinking as far as the review, so we could do it in a comprehensive way.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay, so this is the amendment. It's moved and seconded. We'll open that for voting.
Trosa votes no.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to one.
Okay, and now I think Deputy Mayor will move an as amended motion.
Yes, uh, with thanks to Counsel Ramen for standing in for me there. Uh, I will now move the, uh, motion from committee as amended.
Okay, and I need a secondor for an as amended motion, Counsel Cuddy. Okay, so now we're debating, uh, the as amended full motion from committee with the, the change that was just approved. That's on the floor. I'll look for speakers. Counsel Ramen.
Thank you, and through you. Um, I circulated, uh, an amendment that, uh, I'd like to read.
It wasn't on the added, but I did circulate it to counselors.
So what I would like, just because the public might not have seen, is if you could read the amendment, and then I'll look for a second, it would be perfect.
Okay, that the motion with respect to phase two of the section twenty-six official plan review of the London Plan be amended as follows. The official plan amendment is revised by removing changes to where stacked townhouses are permitted along neighborhood connector street classifications and maintaining the existing provision of table ten in the London Plan to permit stacked townhouses on neighborhood connectors only in central London. B, the civic administration be directed to undertake public consultation on the London Plan policies regarding stacked townhouses in the neighborhood place type and bring forward an official plan amendment to a future meeting of the Planning and Environment Committee pursuant to subsection thirty-four seventeen of the Planning Act. No further notice we get, I guess.
Okay, I'll look.
Further notice, I think, was included from staff, but I don't know that it needs to be there, since we're asking for a public participation when it relates to something else. I think it's an addition that perhaps isn't needed language-wise there.
Is this, I just asked our staff, is that necessary language it was suggested? No? No? Go ahead. All right, we're just taking it out.
Sorry, yeah, it's just A and B.
Okay, I'll look for a second for that. Counsel Hopkins, okay, moved and seconded. Counsel Ramon, would you like to speak now?
I'll reserve my comments until the end.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, I mean, don't go ahead, I'll look for other speakers. Okay, so that's moved and seconded. I'm just going to refresh these scribe here so I can see it, too. And now I'll look for speakers on this. I'm just reading it all. Sorry, I was just reading it. Counsel Ferreira, go ahead, you, you go first.
That's okay. Um, sorry, I was just going through this. I was a little confused on the first part, but I'm glad that we kind of cleaned it up, and I have this easy amendment here to read. I'm looking at part B, and I'm looking at part A. And it does seem like part B is kind of where I would like to go, just get some further public consultation. I would wonder, would we need part A if we were to vote up part B? I, I feel like, um, if we were to vote for part B, we don't need part A because we're doing that, um, public engagement. Uh, so that's just, I guess, a question maybe to staff or the mover, or whoever could answer that question.
So Counsel, um, what would happen if you separated them is, you would have the committee's recommendation in, which would be permissive, and you'd be proceeding through the process of ministerial review. And then you'd go out and consult on London Plan policies, knowing that we're already in the process of doing that. So it probably doesn't make sense to separate them, um, because you'd be consulting on something that we're already essentially proceeding with. I, I mean, I guess we could do that, but I, I'm not sure if that's your intent, just, so I hope that helps with your question.
Uh, well, my, my intent is just, I guess, um, all right, that's fine. I, I do support, uh, just the greater public consultation. I guess I got a lot of things to say. I learned a lot, too. So lots of things have been changing, especially in the last couple hours right before the meeting. But I guess I'll leave those remarks for after this vote. So I will support this, because I do think we need some extra time to slow it down and get some more public consultation at this time.
Okay. Go to Deputy Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship. So, uh, I will not be supporting this, and I'm going to ask colleagues, uh, to not support it as well. And I'll run down a few reasons here. But I'm going to start with, uh, something that I, I want colleagues to frankly be aware of. And I'm not saying this as a scare tactic or a, oh, you know, waving my hands around. But about forty-five minutes ago, I had a text from the federal Housing Minister's office asking what time we expected to be dealing with this agenda item today, because they'd be watching. I had a similar request yesterday, uh, from the provincial, uh, offices. So, uh, first of all, if we think that they're not watching in terms of the infrastructure and the housing accelerator funding, uh, that we have working on now, they are. But I really want to boil this down to, this motion is about the stacked townhouses. I'll talk to you the rest of the things later and on the main motion. But what we are really, really saying here is that this is coming down to a difference of one story in areas outside of central London, because it's already permissible in central London. That means outside of the limited opportunities to assemble some multiple properties for infill, we're also prohibiting four-story stacked townhouses in new subdivision developments, which are still occurring and moving through processes inside the urban growth boundary. So if we don't allow these, uh, then we are actually only going to add pressure to expand the urban growth boundary even further than we already have. And I know the colleagues want to say, this is about public consultation and taking our time. But you've all seen the correspondence. It is not about more public consultation. It is about residents who want this killed on their street. And we've seen comments in some of the emails that have even, has gone so far as to say that people who can't afford a single-family home shouldn't be on their street. That has been part of the communications that we have received. Now, however you feel about that, I want to dispense with this notion that public consultation is done, because it's not done, uh, and we don't need to do anything about that. Because when we start looking into the London Plan policies, first of all, section nine-twenty dash two, the policy says that this table will provide the broadest possible uses, but also make clear that the zoning may not allow all uses at the full range required and may require a ZBA to ensure a context-appropriate fit for the neighborhood. That means if you're in an R1 zone, you're going to have to come in with a ZBA, and it's going to trigger all the normal planning application processes, notifications, a PPM at Planning Committee, and those sorts of things. And I'm going to pause there, and I'm going to ask you, your worship, if you can check with staff to confirm that ZBAs would still be required on these sites where necessary to fit with the area.
I'll go to, uh, whoever would like to answer that. Go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. Uh, the answer is yes, uh, there'd still be, this is the policy framework at this point, and we will still require the zoning amendments, either through site-specific, possibly through rethink zoning. There's still public consultation on, uh, as part of this process.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So the difference here is a difference between an official plan amendment and a ZBA or zoning bylaw amendment combined, or just the zoning bylaw amendment. The difference is a thirty-day longer extension on approvals, if they're given. It's also almost double, it's, it's twelve thousand dollars more to do a combined ZBA and OPA than it is to just do a ZBA. So you're adding costs to the price of housing. Then we have that in policy seventeen-thirty, specific areas may be considered in limited circumstances, and then there's five criteria in there, and I'll let you read the criteria themselves. But the, what it boils down to is, it would be very difficult to make the argument in a greenfield scenario to allow stacked townhouses, because they're not permissive as of right in the policy framework, not the zoning, but the policy. A lot of people are getting ahead of this and assuming that zoning is going to be granted on every application, when in fact, all we're doing right now is an official plan amendment. We can get into, you know, sixteen-thirty-five and sixteen-thirty-seven policies on the zoning to the upper heights. This is where it talks about the applications being evaluated under policy seventeen-seventy-eight for potential impacts on adjacent nearby properties in the area, degree of which impacts can be managed, considering whether the built form, the shadowing, all of those things, uh, are relevant in terms of their impact on the community. So nothing has changed in the zoning process. That means the side yard and rear yard setbacks are all the same. That means the maximum lot coverage requirements still have to be met. We are talking about three stories versus four stories.
Thirty seconds.
On a neighborhood connector, thank you. Uh, and so I really encourage you to reject this amendment and support the four-story stacked towns, which we have heard time and again are the most affordable form of new housing that the private sector can build. So if we truly care about affordable housing, defeat this and stay with the original recommendation.
Thank you. I have Counsel Frank next.
Thank you, yes. I was just hoping for a bit of clarity. So I noticed in this motion, this amendment, um, that it references central London. And, uh, I was just, uh, wanting to inquire perhaps through the chair to the mover, um, feel free to reel me out of order if you don't want me to. But I'm just wondering if they meant central London or the primary transit area?
Sure, I can ask the chair what they meant.
Thank you. Uh, I was provided the language of what it is in the London Plan currently. The amended version, which I tried to amend to at committee, was for the primary transit area, but I was told that I had to go to the, uh, original language that is included in the London Plan.
Counsel Frank, go ahead.
Thank you for that explanation, yes. Um, then I won't be supporting this, because I actually, uh, really desperately want intensification in the primary transit area, and central London is a much smaller space than the primary transit area. So I won't be supporting this.
Okay. I'm going to add myself to the speakers list, which means, given the two, the chair and the vice chair are standing, I might have Counsel Pelosi take the chair of this meeting and have myself on the speakers list. That's all I have so far, but others might want to jump in.
Thank you. I have the chair in recognizing Mayor Morgan as the next speaker.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to share a few words on this. So I'm not going to support, uh, the amendment for a few reasons. One, uh, along the lines of what Counsel Frank said, um, not only do I support stacked towns as was proposed when I moved it at committee, uh, I certainly don't want to go back to just the London Plan provisions and not do what staff recommended in their report on stacked towns along primary transit areas. I want to talk about a little bit on, based on what the deputy mayor said and add some other context. Um, I want to talk about, first off, central London. So this is an area bounded by Oxford Street, Adelaide Street, and then the river all the way around. So since this has proposed, I've gotten lots of letters from people in the Soho area, in the Woodfield area, who are really worried about how this will change the impact of your neighborhood, their neighborhood. And the challenge I have with that is, uh, they already have, within the London Plan, permission for four-story stacked towns on neighborhood connectors in all those areas. So that's a bit of a problem, because people are getting concerned about something that has been permitted for years, saying they're worried about how it's going to change the context of their neighborhood, when it's already been there and in existence and able to be done. What I see in the public correspondence on this, and what I see in the posters that are going up in different boards, is a lot of information that is about anxiety and worry, and not based on the facts and the economics of how these things would actually work across the city. And I said this at committee, we saw this with four units as of right in other cities. Now, this council had the foresight, and, and I think the wisdom, to approve four units as of right over a year ago, just about a year ago, actually, in September. And we've not seen the city taken over by four units as of right. Other cities, Windsor, Oakville, others, had huge panics on this from their public. This was going to change the character of neighborhoods. This was going to fundamentally reshape their cities, to the point where some of them actually forego, forwent, housing accelerator funds, monies, or returned it, because their council wouldn't pass the provisions. So I'm really concerned that we have a situation here where people are speculating on what might happen, and we're not going back to the economics of what's allowed, what's realistic, and what's likely to happen in our city. If we want to talk about housing affordability, we have to be talking about stacked towns in this city. We have to be talking about it. Other cities have them. They're a really affordable form of housing. They're not going to be built on streets where you have to acquire three or four million-dollar properties to build units of stacked towns. They're going to be done in economically viable areas where the, a land can be accommodated, where the land mass is proper, and where it probably provides a level of rejuvenation to those neighborhoods. It's not going to be everywhere. Already in the London Plan, the base in the London Plan for what's allowed across the city, not just on neighborhood connectors, but any street in our city, is three-story townhouses. So stacked towns and one story higher, more people living in them, so two families, let's say, and one story higher. That's the difference that we're talking about here, and only on neighborhood connectors across the city, not on every single street. But even within the London Plan provisions, we haven't seen large amounts of neighborhood turned into three-story townhouses based on the provisions that are already allowed in the London Plan. You know, what we're voting on here is to provide people of all ages, especially first-time homebuyers with lower incomes or young families, an opportunity to secure housing in our city. Now, we're voting to help alleviate dangerous and overcrowded conditions in multiple neighborhoods throughout the city. We got too many people living in single-detached residences. We need to provide more intense options across the city. We need to provide options for people not to have to go out and have single-family homes spread out in the suburbs, or worse, in Lucan, or Kilworth Quoak, or Elderton. We have to be the center of a level of intensification in our region if we're going to actually take a housing crisis seriously. And I know that there are some colleagues who would like to do more public consultation on this. This is a very clear change, and it is very difficult to have months of public consultation when we're calling this a housing crisis. We actually have to move forward in a meaningful way on a level of light density in residential neighborhoods. And I know not everybody in those neighborhoods is going to like that, but that is what we actually have to do if we're going to move forward with a level of affordability in our city.
Thirty seconds.
And so I, I would ask colleagues to defeat this motion, allow us to move forward with these provisions, allow the zoning consultations to happen when they come forward, and let's move forward with more light density options across the city, even though it won't happen on every street everywhere.
Thank you. I'll return the chair to you, realizing Counsel Hopkins would be next on the speakers list.
Go ahead, Counsel Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you very much for your advocacy on housing in our city. I am, uh, seconding this motion, and I am seconding it for the reasons, uh, I just heard from our worship about the concern in the community. It really starts from trying to understand exactly what we're doing and how we're moving forward with all these changes that are going on. I, public consultation does not mean that the public is going to come out and they're going to kill whatever application is going to go forward, going from three to four stories. We already have a process for that. This is an opportunity for the community to understand, even if they are on a neighborhood connector, and exactly what the changes are being proposed. There has not been an opportunity to do this. Uh, I'm, I'm really glad that we're not going to use scare tactics, um, at all, because my understanding is by not doing this right now does not prohibit applicants moving forward to take advantage of the housing accelerator fund. So the more we, we have, um, conversations and the more we, um, understand exactly what is going on in our city, gives us, it gives the public trust in, in what we're doing and an understanding, even as me as a counselor, knowing what we are doing and with the changes that are going on. I don't sit on, on the planning committee. It's complicated, and it needs to have the conversation in the community when we make these changes. I, um, I, I want to, um, really, um, speak again to the, uh, the neighborhood. We all have neighborhood connectors in our community. I have residents reaching out, they want to even know if they are on a neighborhood connector, just so they understand what we're doing. We need to give them time, and we need to get that trust back, because my concern is, as we go forward with the many changes that are going on in our community, the public is going to resist and push back. That is why we need to do this. So I'm hoping it can support, um, the, um, the process going forward. It's not stopping, it's not saying no to infill, it's not saying no from three to four. It's that consultation that needs, needs to be given. So, um, I'll leave it at that, and, uh, I think we, we need to, um, show the community that, uh, we do want to have that conversation with them as we move forward.
I'll look for other speakers on, go ahead, Counsel McAlister.
Thank you, and through the mayor. Appreciate the debate on this. I, I've taken time, I've looked at it. I'm still not willing to, to support. time. I've looked at it. I'm still not willing to support this motion, because honestly, I think from my perspective, I'm trying to also offer some insight here as well. And to the point that was made earlier about affordability, what I find tough is I agree with my colleagues that I think it's appropriate to have those consultations with community, with developments. But what I think has happened with the housing crisis we've experienced, which I think illustrates how unfair it's become, is the people I'm talking to a lot of the time are also my peers, who have been completely shut out of a housing market, which is very unaffordable. And I think, again, to what's being said, I think we need to put new options on the table. I have seen stacked townhouses in other communities. And I really want people to be able to enter the market. And if this is an option, if this is something we can do to bring more people to London, because this is the thing, is we often hear in these discussions, it's about the people who currently live in these neighborhoods. And I think they absolutely should voice their concerns. But I also want to have the foresight to think of the future for this city. And I want people to view London as a place they can come to, they have housing options, that can also be affordable. Because unfortunately, I think too many people have been shut out of this market. So as loud as these voices are, and we've got a lot of messages from these Londoners, I also think I'm trying to speak for people who have yet to enter the market or are trying to enter the market. Because I've seen this firsthand, and I feel that frustration, and it's awful. And honestly, I think we have to build a city for the future that has these options. I won't be supporting this. I want to see us move forward, and I want to have more housing options available for Londoners now and into the future. Thank you.
Counselor Priville.
Thank you, Chair. And I do have, through the chair, a few questions for the staff. And one of them, and I'm going to actually read it, because I want to make sure that I don't miss anything on this. One of them was already answered, and I'm just going to reiterate it. Future zoning amendment application would be a public process. And I'm quite sure I heard the answer, yes, but if you can please confirm it for me.
Go ahead.
Thank you, through Your Worship. Yes, that's correct. A public process for any zoning amendment application.
Thank you.
Counselor Priville.
Through the chair again. Would the neighbors be consulted and have the opportunity to comment on the possibility of a stacked townhouses project in their neighborhoods?
Go ahead.
Through Your Worship, for site-specific amendments, yes, that's correct. There would be public notice, and neighbors would be notified within 120-meter radius of the subject site.
Go ahead, Counselor Priville.
Thank you. And through the chair again, can you confirm that this amendment would introduce stacked townhouses as one possible use for properties along the neighborhood connectors? And as I saw the note on Table 10, that not all identified uses would be permitted on all sites. Does that mean that the applicants would require to submit further applications to facilitate the construction of the stacked townhouses?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through Your Worship. Yes, as part of any requirements for complete application, we would need a planning and design report. And through the staff review, we would follow the criteria, the planning evaluation in the London plan, and our tools part of the London plan, that work through for context, fit, any mitigation measures, things like that.
Thank you. And the last one. What would be required to support a future zoning by-law amendment application to demonstrate that stacked townhouses are appropriate within the context of the neighborhood?
Go ahead.
Through Your Worship, again, the planning impact analysis or the evaluation criteria would be used as part of the analysis in determining the appropriateness of the stacked townhouse in the context of the community.
Counselor Priville.
Thank you very much for those questions. And honestly, whatever, what is, sorry, not whatever, what's in front of us, I honestly believe that it's an opportunity. And it would be more, I think that the neighborhoods are most worried about the existing, the people in their existing neighborhoods. I think if I look at this, that the challenges for the developers into the existing neighborhoods are much higher, much more expensive. And I do see opportunity, for example, for greenfields within our urban growth boundary. If I look at currently, if I look at the pricing of regular townhouses, they're about 600,000 or about 500. We are looking at three to four, four-fifty, four-star townhouses. What we are looking for is the middle that we are missing. And I honestly believe that this could be the answer for us, the middle that we are missing. And there was already stated here before, my issue was, in terms of the consultation with Londoners, but based on the answers what I just received from the staff, I believe that each neighborhood will have the opportunity to state their opinions and give their feedback to the staff, through the staff, to the developer. And based on what I heard from the staff, and based on the proposal, I will not be supporting what's on the table right now, and I will be supporting the original. Thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Ploza next.
Thank you, Your Worship. And a question through you to staff. I don't know, maybe the meeting's been long already, or the day's been long in general. Just looking for clarification for the motion that's on the floor, for the amendment. Part B, would this, would this civic administration essentially be going back out for consultation on stacked homes, on neighborhood connectors? Just, I guess it's the question of, are we essentially just pulling it back and just taking that portion to go back for more public consultation versus approving it now?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through Your Worship. Yes, it would be a separate amendment. That would be part of a separate consultation process. It wouldn't be part of this motion or should all the, this amendment be carried forward today? What's being requested, it would be a separate amendment altogether, and requiring a separate public consultation. It would be a standalone official plan amendment.
You can ask a follow-up if you're not quite sure.
Yeah, one more time in different words. I still, I'm sorry. So that was a yes, if something else is different is done, that the wording need, sorry.
I think, if I, maybe if I, I didn't want to make sure I interpret right. I think what the councilor's asking is, should the amendment pass, and we'd like to proceed at some point after consultation with some intensification of stacked townhouses, what would that look like from a process perspective?
Through Your Worships, so we go through our standard OP amendment process. So it would be a staff-initiated process, and we'd have a PPM, and have that discussion and bring it back to committee.
Go ahead, Counselor. Oh, Mr. May, there's your mic. Thanks.
Sorry. Thank you for that. I am supportive of stacked townhomes. I appreciate the intensification and the different entry point they can make into the market, realizing we need housing across the entire continuum. I will be supporting this. For me, it's fine, the way, yes, and I do, would love to see stacked townhomes being allowed. My concern is the rate at which we've done it, or how we've done it, and the public misinformation that's out there, that this is a decision of a council, and an extra cycle or two, whenever staff bring it, would be fine, that the public has an opportunity to understand what neighborhood connectors are, as they're not, are connecting, they're not at the collector's streets. I know residents are having problems finding maps to understand what the parameters are through the city's website, of just a more wholesome conversation. I'm not, to be clear, supporting it. I live in a multi-unit dwelling. So I did have some residents reach out of, how would this change our neighborhood, what type of, we're back to the what type of people? That's not where I'm coming from. So just to be clear of why I'm supporting it, it's just for more community input and clarity from staff of what this means overall for London, not trying to take people out of the housing continuum.
Okay. Other speakers on this. Go ahead, Counselor Ferreira. Go ahead. Wait, you did go. I think you, no, you can't go again. You went, you went first. Sorry. Yeah, so you would have another chance after we get through the amendment, because there would be another as amended motion. So, but right now, no. I have Counselor Trosal.
Thank you. Well, I found that there was so much confusion in the public. I actually did undertake to do quite a bit of outreach to folks in my ward. And people really weren't clear what neighborhood connector streets were. No, it's not Richmond. It's not Richmond, Adelaide. It's interior streets. It's Wichwood. Counselor Rahman mentioned a few in her ward. And this is throughout, this is throughout the entire city, at least in terms of what seems to be the case on the very, very hard-to-use and very, very confusing tables. And I think that for a change of this magnitude, we owe it to the public to take another cycle and generate some more information that's detailed, because there are a lot of inconsistent things that are being said here right now. Okay? Now, there's also an assumption, there's also an assumption that stacked townhouses are going to create affordable housing. I've had people respond to me saying stacked townhouses are going to help us solve the homeless problem. I've had people respond to me saying stacked townhouses are going to create this whole new range of affordable units. But it's also quite possible, and this is why I want a staff report that goes into more detail about the nature of the stacked townhouses that we're allowing. Because it could just as easily be the case that stacked townhouses are going to be very expensive, and they're going to be investment opportunities. I have a very sincere worry that many stacked townhouses are going to be purchased by investors who are going to turn them into short-term accommodations, BMBs. And I think we really need to look at what the interaction is between our existing enforcement mechanism of that type of bylaw with what this is going to open up. Now, I want to make it very clear, I am not against stacked townhouses. Stacked townhouses can be done very nicely, sometimes not so nicely. But stacked townhouses need to be considered in some greater detail. Yes, they can afford some options in some areas. But based on the fact that this particular provision was raised as an amendment at a public participation meeting, a day or two before the public participation meeting, I think that when we look at what our standard is for what requires a new public participation meeting, this most certainly satisfies that requirement. And I think that once we get a more fulsome staff report on stacked townhouses, and how other jurisdictions are dealing with this, and the different types of ranges of what stacked townhouses look like, and by the way, it's not necessarily the case that you're going to be limited to four units on a property, because the property might be large enough to support eight. We don't know that yet. We need more information before we proceed on this. So in closing, I want to say that I think the public, the public, should be given better and more information about what this is really about, what this is really about, what some other options are, and an ability to respond. There are streets that I know I have in my ward that are not connector streets, that might actually be good candidates for stacked townhouses. I talked about this a little bit before, when I talked about my own Brookdale community. I think in a sense, talking about stacked townhouses on all neighborhood connectors is over-inclusive. And in another sense, it may be under-inclusive. It is under-inclusive, because it might be, it might be appropriate on other types of streets. We need to do more study. So in closing, I'm going to say that I found it very illuminating in going around and talking to residents in my ward, in terms of the disconnect, the disconnect, the fundamental disconnect that we have between the planning process and how people feel about it, how people understand it. We have to course correct. We need a course correct in order to bring people's expectations and understanding in line of these very important policies.
Thirty seconds.
I know we're under some constraint, but we cannot short-circuit a legitimate public participation process. And I urge councilors to support this amendment. And I thank Counselor Rahman for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for other speakers who haven't spoken yet. Counselor Rahman, go ahead.
Thank you. So I want to thank my colleagues on all sides of this matter for engaging in this discussion today. And I think it's important that we've had the chance to discuss this. I want to start with, we all know that London is facing a housing and an affordability crisis. We've heard from the Home Builders Association and LDI that stacked townhouses are a good tool to advance our goals of increasing housing, and it is contained in our London plan already. However, the amendment that was proposed to the staff recommendation to include stacked townhouses everywhere was done so with very little opportunity to consult with the public. And that is the impetus for the amendment that's in front of us. This isn't a, hey, we don't want stacked townhouses. It's a civic administration be directed to undertake further consultation, so that people can provide their thoughts and opinions on having these stacked townhouses along those neighborhood connectors everywhere. As I said during the planning meeting, I supported them in the primary transit area because, to me, intensity and transit should go hand in glove. I will say that using this blanket change that doesn't respect the discussions, isn't respecting the discussions that are happening in our neighborhoods. What I've heard is significant concern over the lack of consultation on suburban streets in my ward, the lack of transit to support adding growth on these connectors, which are already densely populated streets. A few of the large connectors in my ward, Tocalla Trail, Eagle Trace Drive, don't have transit on them. Courier and Tocalla have two of the city's most overcrowded schools, one Catholic Elementary and one high school. Aldersbrook, Black Acres, and Aldersbrook Gate have expressed grave concerns over the current traffic and density in their area. I ask colleagues to give the public the chance to participate in this discussion. We have time to have this discussion further. This isn't about putting this off for numerous cycles. This is about allowing this to go to planning for further discussion. This isn't attached to the funding for our London, our Housing Accelerator Fund. This is a separate component which allows for us to continue to have this conversation. As we heard from others in this committee, what we heard from the mayor as well, is people are not jumping to build these in the areas that are already permitted. So why are we saying that we have to do this absolutely now if there isn't people lining up to build them everywhere already? So I do think that there is an opportunity for us to have a conversation. And I want to just reiterate something that Counselor Hopkins said. And Counselor Hopkins and I, our wards have very similar makeups with new development. And so I know what I'm hearing sometimes from her ward is what I'm hearing in mine. You know, I do think that we are running the risk of making moves without the community on side with some of these big conversations. They know that we have a housing and affordability crisis. They want an opportunity to also have a chance to say how they'd like to see things on their streets and in their neighborhoods. And we have to respect, even if we disagree with them on where they are on the matter, we have to respect the opportunity for consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers? I mean, there's only four options left, so, and I don't see any of them looking to speak. So, okay, so this is on the amendment moved by Counselor Rahman, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. We'll open that for voting.
So votes, yes?
Closing the vote. Motion fails six to eight.
Okay, that returns us to the main motion as amended. Okay, so fresh speakers list, because Counselor Rahman was first to speak there and introduced an amendment. So I'm looking for the as amended main motion now, comments.
Your Worship, just in terms of presenting the report, I know Counselor Frank had suggested she might want to vote on a couple of items separately. So I'm wondering if we can just ask, before we get into debate, about, perhaps we could go to Counselor Frank, because she had circulated something in advance as well.
Sure. And I'm not, this doesn't have to count as you're speaking. And and I'm not, this doesn't have to count as you're speaking. I'm just, are you looking for something to be dealt with separately? And you can just articulate.
Thank you. I would like to vote on part V, reclassify the following portions of Rapid Transit Boulevard. So it's part V, A, B, C. I would like to separate that and vote against it and speak to it.
I think if you look in the in the Escrib motion, it might be a slightly different lettering.
Your worship, I can perhaps help.
Can you just guide us because we're going to track that down?
So the councillor is speaking to section A, part V, A, B, and C, I believe, is what she's speaking to.
Okay, so colleagues see that if you go up, so I'll just articulate for people reading this. In motion one, it's got the full motion. Now, there's a slightly as amended version of that that we're working on based on the amendment that approved. Councillor Ramon is not actually the mover of the as amended, even though it says her is moved. It's actually Deputy Mayor Lewis with the seconder, I think, in councillor Cuddy. But just so you know, the part that councillor Frank is asking to vote on separately, it's in part A, V, A, B, and C. I'm just going to need a minute, colleagues. I'm just going to articulate to colleagues why it's taking me a minute. If we were to vote on the part that you'd like separately, and you were successful in having that defeated, we don't actually have a version of the bylaw tonight that has it done with those pieces out. So I'm just determining how I can let you articulate the vote you'd like without needing to ask you to just refer the whole thing back to have it removed, which I'm not sure is your intent. So I think, Mr. Maythers, I put you on the spot to say, what is the level of complexity? Should we actually remove those items, V, A, B, and C, with having the bylaw adjusted because it refers to specific mappings? So if it's complex and requires you to go back and do this, it's fine. I'm not sure how complicated this is, but if it's striking a few lines, easy. If it's like rewriting multiple sections in multiple components and it's linked to the other item on the agenda that, by the way, we passed, then that's a little more complex.
Through your worship, so it would require changes to the mapping as well. So that would be a more complex change. So we wouldn't be able to turn that around very quickly.
I just need a couple more minutes. Okay, so colleagues, here's the here's the dilemma that we face on this that is different from sometimes. Sometimes when we have things coming through committee, pretty easy to say, we'll vote on these policy directions separately. In this case, by voting on them separately, we would, if any of them passed, we would not have a bylaw to proceed tonight with the committee's intent to go through the process of passing the bylaw, which would be problematic because it's not, in some cases, a quick fix. And we certainly, with a bylaw, would not want to have, we would not want to have staff take a 20-minute break and say rewrite the bylaw. And this is why it's important, as councillor Ramon did when she provided her direction, she asked staff to help bring an alternative bylaw that actually had those pieces carved out so that we could do that. So in the absence of having that, the option that I have before you is, we can't separate it. You can speak against, that you oppose certain sections of it, but we probably have to proceed with voting on the package as a whole at some point, regardless of how you feel about each individual part, and colleagues could certainly speak to the parts that they may or may not like and decide on the package as a whole. Or the whole thing has to be referred back, to be taken apart in the way that colleagues would like to be taken apart because alternative bylaws aren't available for pieces of this. So I just don't see how I can allow separate votes on components that actually change the bylaw to a level that we can't just tweak at a meeting. So that's where we are. So I I that's the thumbs up. You understand the rationale. Okay. So speak, people can speak and say, I like this, I don't like this, but maybe I'm, and that means I'm not supporting the whole thing, or that means despite that, I'm supporting the whole thing. So that's where we are. I know there's a couple of requests, but I think that it is easier for us to look at this as a package. And that allows the council to move forward with the bylaw. And and you can point out the parts you like and don't in the debate, which I think everybody has the opportunity to still speak on. And we'll go through that. Do you want to, so is this your, do you want to speak now? Or is it, okay, great. Councillor Frank's on the speaker's list.
Thank you. And as always, a good reminder for myself to submit things in advance as opposed to on the floor. So my apologies for that. I will be supporting this whole thing because I like a bunch of it. But personally, I don't really love the reclassifying the following portions of the Rapid Transit Boulevard. It's essentially taking off the north leg of BRT, which I know isn't funded. But I don't like, and I think there's a really good letter that was submitted. I don't really like taking away the north rapid transit link without having any alternative option provided. It gives me some anxiety to think that the entire north end of the city will not have any rapid transit and we continue to intensify, which is the rest of this motion, without adequate transit support. And I just worry about all the cars that will be showing up in the north end and, you know, not enough bus spaces and rapid transit for people to actually get to work and to school, and all the congestion that causes. So I don't love taking this way. I know it wasn't funded, as I said before. I was not part of that council, so I'm not going to kick the dead horse. But I just find that it gives me anxiety to have no rapid transit north leg. So I don't like this part, but since I didn't get my stuff together in advance, I suppose I will be supporting it regardless. So thank you.
Councillor Ferrera.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm speaking to the change in the neighborhood place types, specifically in the neighborhood connectors. So, you know, I'm generally supportive of that. I I see four-story stacked townhouses as a right on the neighborhood connector streets as a good thing. It's the missing middle that we keep on talking about. You know, we always are talking about density. Density is good. It leverages the existing infrastructure so faster development can be built, and it's a cheaper way to go in that in that aspect. And, you know, from the communications that I also read, you know, it was pointed out, and I would like to point it out as well. It allows socially diverse, inclusive, sustainable, and walkable communities to arise. And that's exactly what we want, and it's within the London Strategic Plan as well. So I like that. And it's, you know, as it was pointed out, it's literally one unit stacked on top of another unit and the same floor area for a single detached dwelling. So basically, we're using the vertical space. We're using the face, the space that exists. So it works within the realm of physics, I guess. So that does make sense. And and I did support the more of the community engagement part because it is a big change to the official plan. And, you know, and I, things are moving very fast, especially for me. I'm not on PEC. So I'm learning a lot all the time. And I went out and I was trying to really kind of get feedback from from the community. And I did call Woodfield and I did call Soho. And I had conversations with them, and I'm going to have to call them back because I was unaware of the central area part actually giving that as of right for the four-story stacked townhouses already. So I will be making that. I appreciate the mayor pointing that out to me. So I guess I'm really kind of focused on the river to the east side of my ward because my entire, or sorry, the west side of the ward, the entire east side of my ward from the river on already has that as of right. So it's the river from the west side of the ward. So that does point out Blackfriars. And it does look at Woodward. And Beaverbrook actually already has that as a right for stories stacked townhouse. So that neighborhood connector doesn't apply. So I'm really kind of talking about Woodward and I'm talking about Blackfriars. So just, I am generally supportive. I did want to see more public engagement. So my vote is really going to kind of be, you know, how things apply, I guess, in Blackfriars specifically. Because I know there's some people that are worried. So specifically for the near-campus neighborhoods policy, I guess we're going to bring that up again. I wanted to know, these changes, how would that get plugged into the near-campus neighborhoods? Specifically with the stacked townhouses and the four stories. I'm I'm interested on how the floor area ratio regulations are applied with this change. And I'm also interested on how with the graduated bedroom limit, how that is. Because, you know, there is that chart that we got on the last, I believe, PEC report early on this year. And it did show that chart. It did show different housing types, but it didn't have the stacked townhouse type. So I just wanted to know, how would that apply with that?
Thank you. Through your worship, under the near-campus neighborhood policies, it would, it references the tables of the London Plan. So by having this amendment go through, then it would be recognized under those policies.
So it would be, it would adhere to the prescription of the near-campus neighborhood still. Correct?
Through your worship, yes, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. For the Heritage Conservation District of Blackfriars itself, I know we kind of spoke to this, but I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification. So with the change to the official plan, the neighborhood place type, we are going to have to come back for the zoning. And I know you spoke to it already, but I just wanted to clarify as well. Are we going to be doing a blanket zoning with the rethink zoning work that we're doing? So all all the properties will be rezoned? Or are we still going to the site-specific zoning so when an applicant comes in, they submit their zoning application and it comes to PEC and it goes through that process?
Through your worship, any applicant can make a site-specific application. Specific to Blackfriars, there's quite a bit in terms of the floodplain. So again, based on the planning evaluation criteria that we'd be looking at, that would somewhat set that in terms of the analysis and dictate the the recommendation forward on that. But certainly, as we did mention, that there could be consideration as part of the rethink London process. The policy framework's there, so we'd want to look at how that would align. And again, it would be subject to a public process through the rethink zoning review.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so for the heritage, any type of heritage impact assessment that may come through, how would that get triggered? Does that, I just, I'm just trying to really kind of get right, right down to the the details here. Sorry. For the heritage impact assessment, so if we have, if we do see rethink zoning, redo the zoning so we can have the four-story as of right stacked townhouses, at what point would the heritage impact assessment get triggered? Like, would we have a heritage, would we, because I would assume if an applicant came in and that applicant was building within the confines of what they have as of right, it wouldn't have to trigger to come to the committee. It would be administratively handled. So I wanted to know, would that heritage impact assessment, if it applies, come to council? I'm just wondering, at what point does that come about?
Councillor, I'll have the answer. You got 30 seconds left, though. I'm just letting you know. Go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. If it was as of right zoning and it could come through the building permit process, that would trigger the HIA that you're talking about, a heritage impact assessment. And that would go through the advisory committee process with a recommendation that would come through planning committee and council. So there would be an opportunity to to weigh in on that, that evaluation.
I only got a few seconds left, so I guess I'm done. So so long as, I guess, the process, especially the protection that Blackfriars has with respect to its Heritage Conservation District and with respect to the near-campus neighborhoods, I'm not opposed. So I guess I will be supporting this motion. I will be supporting this motion. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor. I have Counsel Stevenson next.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I have seen some for as-of-right concerns in some of the neighborhoods in my ward begin to start to raise some concerns about the changes that are going to be happening in our city. The stacked townhomes on the connector, the neighborhood connectors potentially has a big impact, again, in my ward and on the residents who live on those streets. And despite that, I am supportive, because we need more housing, we need more affordable options for people. I supported the 10-story building proposals along Oxford Street, even though there are no buildings of that size out there, because change is coming, change is happening in our city. But what I'm a bit confused about is the changes that were made between the issuance of the recommendation from staff to the bylaw, or the motion that came forward, that is reducing the density along Richmond and Western Road. So, regardless of where we're going to put Rapid Transit, Richmond is going to be a main transit corridor. There's, there's a lot of people there, and I'm not understanding why we're reducing density on Richmond and Western at a time when we know we need the housing, we know those are popular areas for that kind of housing. If I could have an explanation on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to take a go at that, because I made the change. So, you're good, you're off the hook. So, one of the, one of the changes I made was, given we're doing broad-based zoning, I thought it was important to align it as well as possible with, with the permissive framework that we have, given the direction that we've gone on, on a number of the, the transit projects. And knowing that the master mobility plan can then be decided and, and kind of upzone those places, that that could be triggered through the completion of the master mobility plan, but, but that way, we're probably in a more appropriate density piece. And if there's site-specific projects along any of the routes that were changed, those could still proceed as site-specific zoning projects that council could assess and decide whether it's appropriate or not. But the, the, the goal that I had was to try to align as close as possible the framework that we're probably, hopefully, probably likely headed towards, based on the, the actual activity that has occurred, the significant activity along Oxford Street. I don't know where future Rapid Transit lines would, would, would come out of the master mobility plan going north. I'm certainly supportive of the recommendations of that plan and what it wants to contemplate. But taking out the piece to make it more in line with what the broad-based zoning should be was my intent, knowing that it could be site-specific, site-specific pieces could be dealt with, or upzoning could occur, or downzoning across the city based on the, the master mobility plan recommendations and where they go. So, might not be exactly what you want to hear, but that was the intent when I, when I made those adjustments.
Thank you. As a follow-up, what's the risk to leaving the high density in those areas until we do have the final decisions for the master mobility plan?
You're asking my opinion, so this is not necessarily the opinion of everybody, but I think we could potentially overdensify an area of the city that does not have adequate supported transit along that line. And then we would be in a, in a bit of a, an awkward situation of, of a lot of mixed density that might be along a corridor that, that would, you know, some consistency is probably ideal. So, you know, that's, that's the way that I contemplated it at the time. So, that's, that's, that's what I was going for.
Thank you. I would just say I would vote against this part of it, if I could, because those concerns are true across the city. And so, to be moving in one direction and asking some areas of our city to embrace this and be willing to figure it out as we go along, now there's certain particular areas where we're saying, oh, not here. And I, and I'm not understanding why there's that justification. I also, when it originally came from staff, it said that on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, planning and economic development, the following actions be taken. And now, the motion is that the following actions be taken. So, we no longer have that recommendation from the planning department. And knowing that this is likely to be appealed, I'm just wondering where that leaves us in terms of this decision. When an appeal is filed, what's the implications there?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. Because this is going through to the province for approval, there's no appeal mechanism.
So, I guess the question, again, is we had a recommendation from our planning staff based on planning and policy decisions. And so, I'm trying to understand why we're going against that, that reduces the density options. Like, it just seems contrary to the direction that the province is asking us to go, to the direction that all of these other amendments go to. And so, I won't, I won't ask it again, but I'm, I'm really asking that same thing, like, what are we doing? And, and why are we not consistent? And it's really making me uncomfortable, honestly, in voting on all of this because of that one piece. It's contrary to everything we've been saying. It's contrary to everything that we're telling residents who are going to get to embrace change in their neighborhood. And, like I said, regardless of what we do with Rapid Transit, we've got a main transit corridor there, and to be limiting housing on this, is there a, a possibility that the province will decline some of these changes? Will they see the original and the change and be able to possibly revert back to the recommendations of our staff?
My understanding is the province can pretty much do whatever they want, but I'll go to our staff with that, because people can petition to the province too as well when things go there.
Through your worship, so, we have been working very closely with the province, just to know that we're not offside for any of the, the changes, especially the ones that are looking for additional heights. As noted, the province can make their own decision on whether they want to permit any of these uses, so there, there is a, is a risk. However, it, historically, the, the province is very interested in what city council is looking for as well.
Well, that being said, they don't really get to see how city council feels about this particular aspect of it, because it's all lumped together into one. So, I don't know if this particular one could be pulled out without, it, it has the same impact, right? We have the bylaws. And you did say that we could ask staff, I don't know, if it does only take 20 minutes to rewrite the bylaws, I personally would prefer to be able to vote separately on I and V, and give staff the time to rewrite it, if it's the will of council. Because otherwise, we should be really clear on this. And I also just want to know, in the motion, it specifically says what the alternate was to staff recommendation, but will that be clear when it goes to the province?
Okay, you have 30 seconds left. That's a question for, I, staff, about what goes to the province. So, I would assume it's the bylaw, but I'll go to staff.
Through your worship, it's the bylaw that is approved by council. We go to the province.
Can I make a point of order? No, sorry, I was going to call a point of order too, but, okay. Well, Counsel Trosal made a point of order first. So, go ahead, Counsel Trosal.
I feel as if we're getting very close to doing committee work on the council floor, which is all the more reason to defer this, but that's beyond my point of order. But we shouldn't be doing committee.
Counsel, that's not a point of order. We're allowed to do exactly what we do at committee on the council floor. There's just different procedural rules on how we can do it, which are a little more restrictive. So, not a point of order. Appreciate your feedback. What's your point of order, Deputy Mayor?
So, my point, point of order is, the counselor just referred to if staff needs 20 minutes to rewrite a bylaw, but that was not, in fact, what Mr. Mayther said. He, he, in fact, said this was so complicated that they would not be able to do it today, because they have to remap everything. So, I think it's very important, through you, your worship, to confirm with staff, they can't do this in 20 minutes.
Yeah. Okay. It was suggested that it was indicated 20 minutes, and that's not what was indicated by staff? No, I know. It's a different change. I was going to ask Mr. Mayther something about the complexity of that change. The other one involved mapping too. I'm, I'm unsure on that, if this one is any different.
Through your worship, for really simple changes, we can do things in, in 20 minutes. This is a complex one, and it applies mapping changes as well, so we'd have to have the team engaged in that, so that this isn't a quick thing.
Colleagues, just to articulate, I understand the restrictions colleagues feel on this. There, there, and I want to ask Mr. Mayther this question. If we were to move a motion, given, like, there's a whole lot of provisions here, and colleagues may say, yeah, I'm good with the package as a whole, but I have concerns about these things. Is, if we were to have it being noted that said, council generally support, like, basically, there was discussion and, and some disagreement on AI and AV, ABC, and just as an it being noted clause. Like, so colleagues know, and the province knows, that, hey, guess what? We had some discussion on this. Not everybody was on the same page, but ultimately, the whole thing passed. Is that something that would actually be passed on to the province? Because I want to give colleagues an outlet for what they're trying to achieve with their discussions, but also recognize that we can't just change a whole bylaw tonight.
Through your worship, my suggestion would be to develop a it being noted clause with that text, relevant text, and then we'd have a cover letter that we submit as part of, including the, the actual body of the bylaw, and then they would be able to see that, that context.
Okay, so there's, I think that might give colleagues an outlet, and it's, again, we're, we would be passing the whole thing through bylaws, but it would be when the province sees this, they would see, guess what? On V, A, B, C, there was discussion and disagreement on council. On AI, there was discussion and disagreement on council, would open up people who want to pitch something different to the provinces, they make their decisions to go and do that. It would still be voted on, though, in its totality as a council. So, I, I offer that as a possible solution. I think it would be very reflective and accurate of the debate we're having, and you'd hear what Mr. Mayther's going to do with that.
I quite like that, but I would also love to know what the vote is on I and V, to just know, is it 1 to 13, or is, or we got a closer vote here? I think that's pertinent info.
Well, I think you're going to have to have colleagues just weigh in, in the debate, to know what their opinions are on this, rather than actually pull apart and vote separately, because we're, we're not going to have a separate vote on the clauses, which would be binding a council on the bylaws referred to by all of these. We're talking about clauses that then activate the decision on the bylaw that then we vote on. So, I would say the it being noted is good. If you want to know how colleagues feel, I'd encourage colleagues to share their opinions during the debate on different clauses, like Counsel Frank and yourself have.
Is it possible to have something at the bottom that says, this doesn't affect the above, but we're reflecting our agreement on this part, AI? Just so that there was a recorded vote on it?
Yeah, there's no, in the procedure bylaw, straw votes or anything like that, that we would include. It would, the best we could do is an it being noted that recognized that there was discussion and it wasn't unanimous on that piece.
Okay, I'll take that.
Okay, so here's what's going to happen. I don't want to do that now, because other colleagues might have opinions. I'm willing to speak at the end and move an it being noted that recognizes that myself. So, I won't speak, and I'll do that at the end, so, to give colleagues that outlet. But I want to proceed with the speakers list now, so that everybody can, can do their thing. So, I have Deputy Mayor Lewis, and then Counsel Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship. So, I want to speak very specifically, because we've had two counselors talk about the removal of the Rapid Transit Corridor place type along Richmond, and it would be replaced with a Civic Boulevard designation. And the question was asked, why would we not leave it in? It's important to note that we are actually raising the Rapid Transit Corridor place type allowable heights with this motion. So, they're going from 12 and 16 under the old London Plan to 25. So, you're not talking about just leaving the density that was there before. You're talking about the density that was there in the old place type, plus up to another 10 stories. So, with there being no funding, the physical changes to the north leg BRT that have not changed since council voted it down, the problems with Western, I think we've all heard very recently with the QP situation. Imagine how much more challenging the traffic issues would be if Rapid Transit was running through Western, and that was slowing things down as well. So, the Western remains a barrier, the CP tracks remain a barrier, and depending on where in the place type a particular property falls now along the Civic Boulevard designation, we are still allowing up to 10 stories at Civic Boulevard at an intersection, and eight in a PTA. So, we're really talking about the difference between 12 stories and 10 stories by changing the place type. But the flip side is, we're allowing, we would be allowing 25 stories in an old place type that only allowed for 12 or 16, because it was designated as a Rapid Transit corridor, but we have no Rapid Transit service there. And, and as Counsel Frank mentioned, there's no funding. Hopefully, there will be some federal funding. Hopefully, there's an option to investigate Warren Cliff and Western Road coming out of the master mobility plan. But with this particular removal, we are actually preventing upzoning. We're not downzoning, we're preventing further upzoning along that corridor. So, there's still opportunity, and as we heard staff say, site-specific applications could still come in beyond those heights. But having said that, and addressed that Rapid Transit piece, I want to be really clear, I support this package as a whole, as a whole. And we're doing some really important things here. And when we think about density targets in the built area boundary, we're allowing 45 stories now in the downtown on our Transit Village place types, 35 stories. Those are all within the built area boundary. So, the intensification targets in terms of building in and up are there. The ability to add some gentler density as infill and in green spaces with stacked towns are there. There's some really good things here. And yes, there are some folks who maybe aren't understanding what's happening. They find it complex. Listen, there were points reviewing this planning committee report the first time, that I had to go back and reread them a couple of times, and I've been on planning committee for a while, and it still was making my eyes cross. But we do need to move forward with these. And so, on the whole, this package is really moving things forward in a positive way that opens up opportunity for all built forms of housing, high-density, high-rise apartments, medium-density stuff along our Civic Boulevards and our arterial roads further out from the core, but still density inside the built area boundary and inside the urban growth boundary. So, those are good things to take away. If we really care about the environment, that is a piece that, and I know Counsel Frank does, but I, I think that that's a piece that matters. We're pushing that, we're trying to keep as much density within the UGB and within the built area boundary as we can. So, I think that there's some really, really good things happening here. And yes, I know people have concerns about transportation and, and water servicing. You know, every planning committee report has holding provisions where water and wastewater need to be still reviewed for further approvals. Same with transportation. And this is one of those and both moments. We are moving forward with an and increase to heights and density in some of our place types through the London Plan. By the way, we haven't even looked at whether any density changes need to be done
30 seconds.
At the neighborhood place type level, which is a discussion for a future after the, but at the same time, Ms. Scher's department is leading the MMP, and the transportation piece is being looked at. And Mr. Dickens' team and Mr. Felberg's team are looking at the affordability piece. So, we are and-bothing several things at once here, but we need to move this piece forward onto the puzzle, so that we can put the other pieces, puzzle pieces together to complete the picture, so that we can meet our housing needs, 47,000 units by 2031 in the City of London.
Counsel Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And again, I want to thank you and the deputy mayor for the work that you're doing on the housing starts in our city. I am a little bit frustrated here, though. And my frustration is really coming from, if you do not support these amendments as a whole, you're stuck. I represent a community, and it's all about development. And there is nowhere now that I'm able to have my comments on the record where I'm not supporting things. So, it's either So it's either support everything on the whole, or well, I don't have a choice. So that to me is a little frustrating. I'm an elected official, representing my community, trying to represent them, trying to do my work here on council, and I feel like I'm stuck. And I'm not sure whose fault it is. But I know when I went to PEC, and I know when I do my homework, and when I see recommendations, and by the way, thanks to staff for the work that you've done. I know you had timelines, constraints to get this going. Very much appreciative with that and the recommendations. But now, the problem begins with the amendments and how I either support the whole or not. So I'm now stuck with, okay, I can just speak to what I don't support, not that it really matters right now, and it's great. The mayor, I hope you are able to do something with the it being noted clause. But I just find that lack of ability for me as a counselor to speak and to be able to vote on something that I do not agree with, or that I have concerns with. So whatever. So I'm gonna speak, I've got three on the amended list. And the first one is the, and I'm not sure what letter that, it is AII. Or it is, out of the five amendments, it is number two. And it is regarding the change of the rapid transit corridor classification. I've been around a long time on this council. I have learned and understand that as we go forward with the master plan, that there will be considerations of designating different streets through that mobility master plan process. We already had a conversation a month or two ago with a counselor wanting to come in, and not, was not supported on having a study done, because we didn't want to influence the master mobility plan. I see this as sort of along those same conversations. But I know by not supporting this, that that is gonna happen through the master mobility plan, that we are going to look at redesignations and intensification, and all those good things that we all want. I was not supportive of number three, the stacked townhouse. Appreciate Counsel Ramon with her motion. And again, that consultation, that is, is information that the community understands as we go forward with the changes in our policies. It's all we want. It's the community to have a better understanding what's going on. And the third one, which is the deletion of the staff recommendation, number D in the recommendation, to me, this is important. If we read the recommendation, we know it's just a consideration of looking at these items as we go through the site plan process. We're not, we're taking that away. We're taking out a consideration to be looked at away in the amendment. So those are my thoughts. I, I'm just not feeling comfortable because I'm going to want to support this bylaw at the end, but I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
So I don't have any other speakers, but I can speak and try to craft something together, but I don't want to get ahead of anybody who might still want to provide some articulation. Okay, oh, go ahead, Counsel Ramon then first.
Sorry, Your Worship, I'm not looking to speak to this item at this time. I just want to make note of the fact that we're at four hours and 40 minutes, and we haven't taken a break. And so I'd like to move a break. I'm looking around, and I'm seeing, sorry, three hours, 40 minutes. I'm jumping ahead an hour, getting ready for it, I guess. But I'm just wondering if we move a 10-minute break?
Yes, I have, see a seconder. I just say to colleagues, like, we're in the middle of the discussion, so I, like, don't talk about it. Come back and, you know, just do what you need to do for 10 minutes and come back here. So I'm doing this by hand. Okay, I'm doing it in the, in the system. Ferrera's the seconder. Okay, this is gonna just open in the system.
Presser votes, yes.
Closing the vote motion carries 12 to 2.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Ramon, for that suggestion. That was good. Okay, are there any other speakers to the main motion before I put together it being noted? Okay, so let me first say, actually, if I'm making a motion, I'm gonna hand over the chair to Counsel Ramon? Do you want, no, okay. You what?
Just in case I have to say something.
Oh. Let's the chair, Counsel, Counsel.
Yeah, I'll take it.
All right, you're chairing. Okay, so I'm gonna move an it being noted. But first, I just want to say, this is not something that I recommend we normally do. The only reason I'm suggesting we do this is because I remember this discussion, and Counsel Hopkins would remember it. When we did the official plan, and we had to pass a whole official plan, there were colleagues who said, I don't like these six or seven provisions in it, but I generally support the whole thing. So this is an official plan amendment. It's one of the few things that goes to another body to decide. And so I think, you know, in this rare circumstance, it can be appropriate for us to add, and it being noted, identifying things that were not necessarily unanimous. And so that's what I've crafted together. But I, what I'm saying is, if colleagues think we're gonna do this at every meeting, I'm gonna start, I'm not gonna rule that in order. This is a very specific process that lands at the province. So the motion that I want to, I'm just turning it a little bit, thanks. So what we crafted together is that the motion be amended, the motion as amended, be amended to include the following. That it being noted that council discussion was not unanimous on the following provisions. AV, and then all the components of it that Counsel Frank mentioned. AI, and the components of it that Counselor Stevenson mentioned. And then I also added the issue of stacked townhouses on neighborhood connectors, just as a general issue, because we had a discussion. There is actually a vote on that, but I thought, to be inclusive, I'd put that in. That's what I have so far. So I'm willing to put that on the floor, and I'll move that now.
Okay, thank you. Looking for speakers.
The great thing is, you don't have to stand up to chair, you could sit down and you could, it's one of those privileges, yeah.
Okay, Counsel Stevenson, seconds. Looking for speakers on that.
I don't need to speak on it, even though I presented it, because I think we all know what I was trying to do.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Van Meurgen.
Sure, I just wanted to confirm that X, I guess it's AX, a small Roman numeral 10, is actually gonna be delineated in the it being noted about stacked townhomes anywhere and everywhere along these connector streets. So that, perhaps the American can confirm that, that will be part of it, the it being noted?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yes, I added it as a general, a general piece on stacked townhouses, given the discussion we had. I would also identify that there's also an actual voting record on that piece, given we had an actual motion, alternate bylaw proposed by colleagues. So stacked townhouses can appear in several sections. I didn't delineate the actual clause, I noted it as a, as a general disagreement that we had.
Is it possible to delineate that? To actually specify small Roman numeral 10?
Okay, the mayor is indicating yes, so put that in.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay, go ahead, Counsel Stevenson.
I know I seconded this, but in, as I reflect on it, should it also say that it will be noted in the correspondence to the province? Because to just have it in the motions, not really is not really going to do anything.
I'll go to staff, but I believe they already mentioned that they were going to put a cover letter including details, but go ahead.
Through your worship, so we would do that way, include in the cover letter the resolution, but if you want to be more clear, that can be, also be added.
Okay, Counselor Stevenson, do you want more clarity on that?
No, I think if the, if the cover letter includes the resolution, then I guess that's, assuming they read all the way through it, though. Could it, could it be highlighted, the disagreement portion, then?
Go ahead.
Through your worship, what we'll do is we'll include the entire resolution, and then in the body of the cover letter, we'll highlight that portion of the resolution, so that it's very clear.
Okay, Counselor Stevenson's good. Any other speakers to this item? Okay, Counselor Trosso, go ahead.
Thank you very much, through the presiding officer, and I don't want to repeat any of the points that I made before. You know, everybody knows where I stand on the points that I spoke to. I want to speak to the bigger issue here, and as I think, and I'm not sure what the technical word for this.
So Counselor, just a reminder, so we are just on the it being noted addition.
Yeah, but it's the it being noted clause that purports to save the rest of it. Okay, would you prefer that I just like defer that now and just come back and discuss the main motion? And yes, I'll do that. Thank, thank you.
Yeah, unless you had any other further additions you wanted added, then maybe save it.
Well, I, I think we're creating a mess here that is not going to put us in great standing with the, with the province, but I really would prefer to see us spend some more time on this, but that's already been litigated and lost, so I'll wait for the main motion to, to state that again. I think we're going into a very bad area here.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the it being noted? Okay, I have not seen any, so if we could open that for voting.
Counselor Pelosi votes yes.
Trust, Counselor Trosso votes no.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Okay, I will pass the chair back over to Mayor Morgan.
Okay, now I need another mover for the as amended motion. The deputy mayor is still standing. You may as well keep standing. You can move it. I need a seconder. Counselor Cuddy's willing to second. So back to the, the main piece. So Counselor Trosso, yes, you're next.
Okay, I'll make this very short. I think that this is too complex to do without breaking down. I'm not going to make a point of order, because you've already spent time thinking about how procedurally we're going to do this. Personally, I would, I think it would make more sense to be able to sort of go through this, item by item. I think different counselors want to vote different ways. I think whatever we're doing right now, it ultimately is going to undermine our credibility with senior levels of government that we're proceeding this way. And I think the way out of this, I think the way out of this problem is, is to put this off and have another discussion. I've already lost that on, on the main, on the main, on the main thing I wanted to talk about tonight. It's not going to turn out differently. I just, I just want to say I'm going to vote against this, because I just think we're creating a mess, and we could be doing a coherent policy in a much more rational way. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? Okay, so now we have the as amended main motion. We're open that for voting.
Trosso votes no.
Counselor Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Back to you, go ahead. Back to you, because that completes the fourteenth report of the Planning and Environment Committee. Okay, we're done the committee reports. We have the added reports, fifteenth report of council in closed session. I'll have Counselor Ramon present that.
Thank you, fourteenth report of the council in closed session. Your council in closed session report that progress is made with respect to items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4, as noted on public agenda, 6.114 CSC, 6.111 CPC, 6.114 SBPC, and 6.113 PEC.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Progress reported. Okay, that's, that's it for added reports, deferred matters, there are none, inquiries. Counselor Frank?
Thank you, and this is my first time doing it, so I know I just can ask one question. So given we're heading into the budget season and the timeliness of the subject, I was wondering and want to ask staff about the viability of preventing agencies, boards, and commissions from hiring PR consultants to lobby council on budget items, or could council pass a resolution that would ask them in good faith to avoid the use of public funds in this purpose?
City manager, go ahead.
Thank you, worship, and thank you for the question. Clearly, as council knows, the city has policies as it relates to the use of our funds, and those policies apply to your budget and the way that we, as your staff, implement those things. Other organizations have their own policies, and while the city cannot prohibit them, or has no control over their policies, so we want to be clear that you understand that, that reality. We are certainly open to council giving direction, if you want us to give advice, or provide, and even to the counselor, I suppose, to bring forward a recommendation for consideration. We're open to that, but we just want to be clear that our rules apply to the city. Other rules apply to other organizations, and you can certainly ask those organizations about their rules, but clearly, we are not implementing our rules with other organizations. So for clarity, we're happy to take any other direction that council might want to give us in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Okay. Any other inquiries? Emergent motions, there are none. Bylaws. Okay, so bylaws. I know it feels like we're close to done, but bylaws have got to be done in a, there's a few ways we've got to do the bylaws here. First, we're going to deal with the updates to the office residential conversion program that I brought forward, which is a hand vote. Yeah, so that, that one's a hand vote. We'll do that first. Then we're going to do the two readings, just two readings, of Bill 332 and 333, which are the heights review and ZBA. The reason why we're doing two readings is because those are related to the components that we cannot bring into effect until the minister signs off on it. So we do two readings, we wait for the minister's approval, and then we might make any changes that come when the minister does that. So we do two readings of those bylaws. The next vote will be on the official plan amendment for the heights review, so the stuff that we do need to approve, so that we can pass it on to the minister. Then we'll do the things that we can approve, that we don't have to hold back on, on the OPA for the PTMTSA pieces. So that's the rapid transit piece that Counselor Van Meurbruggen asked to be a separate vote, so the same as the one above, but just with the rapid transit piece pulled out of it. The, then we'll do Bill 327, which is the one that Counselor Trosso wanted separately on the Huron Street property, and then all the remainder of the bylaws. So does anybody need it divided differently than that, or does that cover everybody? And if I could ask, maybe to speed things up, we do three readings of most of these, we do two readings of the others. When I ask for a mover and a seconder, those mover and seconders are good for all three readings. We're just going to load that into the system, speed it up a little bit. I won't have to ask each time. I see lots of nods. We're going to do that. Yeah, okay. So the first we're going to do is the, the bylaw to update the office residential conversion program with the provisions as outlined in the letter that I added to the council agenda. For that, this is a hand vote, and I will do the first reading, and then we can have any discussion or questions at the second reading. So I'll look for a mover and a seconder of that. Moved by Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor McAllister. All those in favor of first reading?
Pelosi votes yes.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, same mover and seconder for second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Okay, all those in favor?
Close is yes.
Any opposed?
That motion carries.
Okay, and third reading, same mover and seconder. I see nods. All those in favor of third reading?
Pelosi, yes.
Any opposed?
That motion carries.
All right. The next is, we're going to do two readings, just two readings of Bills 332 and 333. The ZBA for, from 3.6 of PEC, which is the heights review, and the ZBA piece from 3.7, the, the PM, the PMTSA pieces. We just need to do two readings of this, because after those two readings, we'll pause until we receive word back from the province on their approval. So mover and a seconder for those. Moved by Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. First reading, there's no debate, so this one will be in the system, so we'll open that for voting.
Pelosi, yes.
Trosso votes no.
Counselor Van Meurbruggen, thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Okay, second reading, same mover and seconder. I see confirmation. Any discussion on second reading? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Trosso votes no.
Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Okay, so we pause. We don't do third reading yet. We'll do third reading at a future council meeting once we have the ministry's response. The next vote is Bill 311, which is the OPA from item 3.6 of the fourteenth report of PEC. It's the heights review piece. And we'll do first reading for that. I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Deputy Mayor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Ramon. We'll open first reading for voting.
Trosso votes no.
Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Second reading, same mover and seconder. Yes, good. Okay. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Trosso votes no.
Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Okay, third reading, same mover and seconder. We'll open third reading for voting.
Trosso votes no.
Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen.
Okay, the next one, Counselor Van Meurbruggen asked to be separately. This is Bill 312, which is the OPA for item for 3.7 on the fourteenth report of PEC, that the primary transit, major transits, whatever the acronym stands for, PTMTSA. We'll, we'll look for a mover and a seconder for first reading. Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor McAllister. We'll open first reading for voting.
Pelosi votes yes.
Counselor Trosso? Second call, Counselor Trosso. Marking Counselor Trosso absent, closing the vote. Motion carries twelve to one.
Okay, second reading of the same bill, same mover and seconder. Any discussion at second reading? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to one.
Okay, and third reading of the same bill, same mover and seconder, and we'll open that for voting.
Yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to one.
Okay, despite the fact that Counselor Trosso wasn't here, we had one separated for him. It's actually more work to put it all back together. We can do it faster just by doing it separately. This is the Huron Street item. I'll look for a mover and a seconder on that. It's Bill 327. Counselor Stevenson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Lewis. A well-open first voting.
Pelosi votes yes.
Trosso votes no, I'm sorry.
Marking Counselor Trosso as present, voting no. Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Okay, second reading, same mover and seconder. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open second reading for voting.
Trosso votes no.
Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
And third and final reading, same mover and seconder. We'll open that.
Pelosi votes yes.
What one are we on?
The one that you asked to be separate.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll vote no. Thank you. Trosso votes no.
Closing the vote, motion carries thirteen to one.
Okay, then what we have left is everything else. So I'll look for a mover and a seconder of that. Counselor Stevenson, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. We'll open first reading of all of those for voting.
Pelosi votes yes.
Trosso votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to one.
Same mover and seconder. All of those. Do you want to re, do you want to say that again?
Sorry, fourteen to zero.
I was going to say someone showed, Counselor Lehman showed up. No, no, there's only fourteen members here. Second reading, same mover and seconder. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Trosso votes yes.
Pelosi votes yes.
Closing the vote, fourteen to zero.
Feel like the clerk was testing me on that at the end of the meeting. Third reading, same mover and seconder. We'll open third reading for voting.
Pelosi votes yes.
Trosso votes yes.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Okay, that's it for, I look for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Ferraro, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. We're going to do that by hand. All those in favor of adjournment?
Close is yes.
The motion carries.